has been given annually to someone who has shown a concern and dedication for public health service in the town of Southborough. And this year's recipient is Nancy Sacco, who is on the Board of Health. Nancy was elected to the Board of Health 18 years ago in 2005. Besides serving on the board, she's been an ICU nurse at Marlborough Hospital for almost 20 years, and 13 years at BIDMC. She's an active participant in Southborough MRC and is a staple at the vaccine clinics that we host at the Senior Center. During COVID-19, Nancy was able to juggle working in the hospital and continuing to serve on the Board of Health instead up in so many ways in the vaccine clinics, including one for pediatric at Woodward School. So I just have a few quotes from people who have worked with Nancy over the years, and I'm going to paraphrase them. But Leslie Chamberlain, she says, "Nancy has faithfully attended almost every board meeting while serving her 18 years. She always did so with a solid and fair mind. Known for her honesty and humor, she has been a very valuable asset to the Board of Health." Paul Pazinski wrote a book, so I'm just going to cut it down to, "Nancy demonstrates a tremendous debt of gratitude for her years of service on the Board," how she was able to put the time in hardly ever missing a Board of Health meeting, working tirelessly at the local hospital, putting in multiple 12-hour shifts, dedicating her lifestyle at home with her three daughters, dogs, and husband, all the while keeping up with the latest public health crises in town. Lou Faison, "It's a pleasure to support Nancy Sacco for the Dr. Timothy Stone Award. As a nurse on active duty in a busy hospital emergency room, Nancy brought her unique insights to expand our discussions and improve decision-making on the Board of Health. Over 18 years, Nancy added her quick wit, decisive inquiry, and her many community experiences to augment the actions of the Board of Health." Dennis Costello, "Nancy, it has been my pleasure to have worked with you over the years at the Board of Health. You always kept the best interest of the town residents in your discussions and your votes. You also had the best wine at the annual Board of Health gatherings." And then from the current Board of Health, "On behalf of the Board, I would like to thank Nancy for her countless hours of time giving back to our community. She has been a staple of the Board and always brings a great perspective. The last few years have been very challenging in dealing with COVID-19, and she pivoted and was open-minded as we, as a town, navigated through. I will always remember her for that. We wish her the best, and she enjoys her retirement from the Board, but look forward to seeing her at future clinics. We are truly honored to present her the Doc Stone Award 2022." Oh, 2023, sorry. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure for the last 18 years, and I encourage people who want to learn more about their town to run for office, you know, really. We need you. Do it. You'll learn a lot. You'll meet a lot of great people, so thank you for everything.
Can we, real quick, we have the eight tellers, please come forward to be sworn down here in the corner with Mr. Hegarty. Ryan Donovan, the Peggy Tuttle Award, please, Ryan.
It'll just be one moment, guys, sorry. Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Donovan, and I'm the Director of the Southborough Library. I'm here to provide a brief update on what's been happening at the library. I'm very happy to report that the Southborough Library continues to thrive. The library staff has contributed to provide dynamic services, including highlights on new books and materials, the library's annual seed exchange, electronic resources, and more. The Southborough Library is your library. If you don't have a library card, what are you waiting for? The library is open on Mondays, Fridays, and Saturdays from 10:00 to 5:00, and Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 10:00 to 9:00. Please come in, visit us, and discover your next great book. The library has added more materials and checked out a lot more books over the last year. The library currently holds over 56,000 physical volumes at our location. This combined with what is offered for electronic and digital access means that patrons have access to five times that number with their library card. Your library card is what gives you access. At the end of 2022, the Southborough Library applied for and was awarded a $10,000 grant from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners out of the Library Services and Technology Act. This grant is helping to support cooking-related activities, as well as information about nutrition and international cuisine. We would like to thank all of our organizational partners who help provide new program funding at the library, including the Friends of the Southborough Library, the Southborough Community Fund, the Southborough Cultural Arts Council, and the CHOT Fund. Assistant Library Director Kim Ivors continues to offer programs for children nearly every day that the library is open. These events include morning storytimes, Lego building, crafter noons, and read to a dog, to name just a few. The library's summer reading program last year had nearly 400 youth participants who read over 117,000 minutes combined. In the summer months, the library held 36 programs for kids that had over 1,600 people in attendance. The library also offers engaging and thoughtful programs for young adults, including a writing club, job interview skills, a Better World Book Club, and a meetup for manga and anime In 2023, the Southborough Library is beginning work on a new five-year strategic plan. As part of this process, I will be asking you, as the residential community, to provide your input and feedback on services and materials that you would want as part of the library collection. We will also be having continued conversations on library space and how we can provide you with the best facility in the years to come. Look for a new library survey coming soon, and please consider attending one of our future library open forum nights, which will take place in the summer and into the fall. The Peggy Tuttle Award for Library Service Distinction is named in honor of library staff member Peggy Tuttle, who contributed over 30 years of service to the town. This year's recipient is a current library staff member and town resident. With over 10 years of service to the Southborough Library, this library leader has taken on increasing roles and responsibilities with the library team. Her leadership and knowledge has been an asset to the town. In the words of patron Lorraine Dingen, this individual quotes, "Demonstrates a willingness and eagerness to be of help always. She is very knowledgeable about reading genre preference and eager to suggest new books to me. She is very comfortable and professional in her role and handles herself well on many literary topics. She forms a comfortable bond that goes beyond the professionalism that's required. She is always bright and cheerful whenever encountered." Please join me in congratulating the 2023 Peggy Tuttle Award winner Leah Selick.
Good afternoon, folks. Welcome to your annual town meeting. It's great to see you all here. My name is Paul Samino. I'm your town moderator. I've been informed by our clerk that a quorum of 100 registered voters is present, and therefore this town meeting will come to order. As your moderator, I'm responsible for the oversight and conduct of the proceedings here today, and I'm especially pleased to see those of you here that may be attending town meeting for the very first time. If you are here for the very first time and you choose to go to the microphone, please let us know, and we'll give you the golf clap you deserve. Today, as always, I will do my best to honor everyone's commitment to our town governance by proceeding along as fairly and efficiently as possible. Now, if you would please rise as the Girl Scouts from our local troops post the colors and then remain standing as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Color Guard, advance.
As the colors advance, I just want to recognize we're talking about Ryland Mancini, Reese McDonald, Allison Pelico, Maeve Lyons, Stephanie Provensole, Elizabeth Lord, Lexi Bistequiel, John Duquid, LJ Rose, Jonathan Talbot, Cole Cottrell, those last four being Boy Scouts. Take it away.
Color Guard, present the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join in singing our national anthem. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight Were the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Color Guard, post the colors. Color Guard, dismiss.
Thank you, Scouts. Very well done. You know, as the colors represent, indulge me for a minute to note that today, March 25th, happens to be National Medal of Honor Day, the anniversary of the awarding of the very first Medal of Honor in 1863. Many of you probably don't know that one of the very few soldiers who were ever awarded the Medal of Honor in our history was from right here in Southborough. His name was Osgood Hadley. He received the Medal of Honor for gallantry in battle in the Civil War and lived out his life here in Southborough. He's buried in the Royal Cemetery. If you're paying attention when you drive over Route 9 on Route 85, that's the Osgood We have volunteer tellers appointed and duly sworn by the clerk should it become necessary to count undeclared votes today. The tellers are Tracy Navaroli, Michelle Pelechi, Angela Varner, Michelle Hokinson, Kate Battles, Kathy Catens, Jack Battles, and Reed Probst. I thank them for their service to us today. Traditionally in New England, town meetings serve as the legislative branch of town government. I think it's important to reinforce that. We decide here whether to appropriate money to run the town for the next fiscal year. We consider whether to create, revise, or remove local town statutes, known as bylaws. Our town of Southborough operates in an open town meeting, which means that every registered voter in town can attend today and vote on all matters in front of us. A warrant is issued in advance of any town meeting for voters to be warned, that's where the word comes from, about the time, place, and substance of the matters to be considered. The warrant before us today is a shocking pink color. You can't miss it. Hopefully, you all had a chance to pick that up on your way in. On page nine of the warrant is where the list of articles starts. There's a total of 43 today, although that number shouldn't give anybody too much concern. As you'll see in a minute, we have some ways of shortening that. As a general rule, the proceedings here are governed by our rules and practices contained in Section 41 of our town code and a reference material called Town Meeting Time, which is a parliamentary handbook that the Mass Moderators Association publishes. In keeping with our longtime practice, the proceedings today continue until any one of four things happen. Either we get to the end of the warrant, we get to the end of the evening at 11:00 p.m. tonight, or and/or until the article that's on at that time is completed, or a motion for adjournment is passed by a majority. Now, we do have a planned adjournment today at 5:00 and then a reconvene at 7:00. I'm confident we will be done today, barring any unforeseen developments. I hope I didn't just jinx us. Another of our longtime practices here in our town has been to allow certain voters into the hall. These people do not participate unless approved by us, and they do not vote under any circumstance. But typically, they are non-resident town employees, members of the press, students from government classes, et cetera. All non-voters can be identified today by their red, white, and blue-starred wristband. Those present today are David Roman, Algonquin Athletic Complex Project Co-Chair; Ernie Houli, Asabod Valley Regional Vocational High School Superintendent; Bill Gilman, a community advocate reporter; John Ciota; Matt Fries; I'm sorry, I don't have a first name, last name Rochelo; and Brian Silver, all from iMedia, who are tech support people here today; Greg Martineau, Superintendent of Schools, Norpro-Southborough Regional; and from the Assistant Superintendent of Operations for the Regional, Keith LaBoy; from the Regional School Committee, Karen Aries; Sean Bevan; Christopher Covino; Joan Frank; Kathy Herball; Kathleen Holland; Mike McCrino; and Sean O'Shea; the Regional Director of Finance, Rebecca Pellegrino; Terry Underwood and Dana Volke from Southborough Access Media; Vanessa Hale, our Assistant Town Administrator; Amy Berry, our Assistant Town Clerk; Ryan Newell, Chief of Police; Melissa Danza, Conservation Agent; John Parent, Facilities Director; Abdul Akhatib, Interim Superintendent of Public Works; Jason Montijo, IT Department Head; Hassan Hamad, IT Manager; Ryan Donovan, Library Director; Colleen Stansfield from our Planning Department; Heather Alker, our Public Health Director; Tim Davis, our Recreation Director; Pamela Francois, Senior Center Director; Carla McCall of Town Accountant; Mark Purple, Town Administrator; Karina Quinn, Town Planner; Brian Ballantyne, Treasurer; Rafael Rodriguez from Youth and Family Services, along with Ellen Rose and Sarah Castle; Jay Tallerman, our Town Council; Taylor Bevanauer, our Environmental Engineer here with Concom; and then three Trotier School student volunteers, Vimala Meila, Alex Madjanis, and Joe Walsh. If there are no objections, we welcome all of those people into the hall today. Do I have the consent of the hall? Please raise your hands. Thank you very much. Please note that the proceedings today are being livestreamed and recorded by, as I mentioned, the fine folks at iMedia. Our bylaw requires me to define the bounds of the hall. Tonight, or today, all of the seats and the aisles between the seats that are in front of the back wall are considered the hall. You must be in one of those areas in order for a vote to be counted. A few points about our parliamentary procedure today. As we, you know what, I'm just reminded, we do have a secondary location in the building, which is the cafeteria. That is also formally part of the hall today. If anybody, for any reason, wants to be there or decides to be there as we move through, I do have it on monitor up front, and we will allow comment and participation, as we always do here, from the cafeteria as well. My trusty sidekick indicates that we don't have an associate moderator in the cafeteria at this time. That's my fault, so let's all stay here for now. Overflow only. Get to know your neighbor. As we proceed, through each article in the warrant, a motion and other pertinent information about each article will be posted on the screen here on the center stage. If there are formal presentations, and we don't have that many, they will be made from the podium on the opposite side of the stage from me. Up on the stage with me is our Town Clerk, Jim Hegarty; our Town Council, Jay Tallerman; our Assistant Town Clerk, Amy Berry. On the floor down front is your Select Board chaired by Kathy Cook, and your Advisory Committee chaired by Andrew Pfaff. With the exception of Mr. Tallerman, all of those folks I just mentioned are also registered town voters like you. It's good to be reminded that the gathering today, as I mentioned earlier, is our town government at work. You are not here as a spectator of town government like you might be at a board or committee meeting that you drop in on. Today, you are town government. And the primary and most prominent function of town meeting does not occur up on stage here. It occurs out there through your considered debates, votes, questions, and participation. Anyone who has checked, any registered voter who has checked in today can go to any of the microphones, state their name and address, and then speak to the current motion or ask a question. If a voter who happens to also be a town official wishes to join the debate, they likewise will wait in the queue at a microphone. All questions should be directed through me. No one may speak until recognized that a microphone by me, and this includes calls to move a question. The only exceptions are to raise a question of privilege or a point of order, which are very specific things. They are not a substitute for "I would just like to move on." If you wish to raise a point of order, you must still rise and be recognized. In general, you will hear from everyone wishing to speak to a motion, pro or con or otherwise, until I determine that things are getting repetitive or belabored, and at that point I might suggest that we move to a vote. Before each vote today, I will remind you of the quantum necessary for passage, for example, a simple majority, maybe it's two-thirds, et cetera. If I can determine the prevailing vote from here, I will announce it. If I deem a vote too close to call, or if at least seven voters rise to question my assessment, then we will have the tellers come forward to count individual votes. At this point, we're just about ready to get started. I want to, going through the warrant, but I do want to repeat and be unequivocal about one last thing that I mentioned, which is that we are town government today. We conduct our town's business today thoughtfully, efficiently. It's an awesome responsibility, and it demands decorum. Our townee bylaw explicitly requires speakers to confine their comments to the article under consideration, as well as to refrain from mentioning by name any other person present. In short, we debate as ladies and gentlemen. We invoke facts. Our opinion's based on those facts. We don't make it personal, and insofar as we honor each other today, we honor ourselves, we honor our town. With that, I have examined the call of the town meeting, the return of the mailing, the officer's return of service, and the posting. Nominally, the moderator must read the entire warrant, either at the beginning of the meeting or read each article prior to the motion introducing it, unless a motion is made to dispense with that reading. Therefore, do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the call of the meeting and the officer's return of service and to waive reading of the separate articles of the warrant?
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor with dispensing, reading the, yes. All against? Motion carries unanimously. Each year, our bylaw requires the Municipal Technology Committee to report to town meeting on its activities, and so before Article 1, we begin with that very brief report. Where is Mr. Probst?
Mr. Probst.
Apologies.
So I guess it stands to reason that the technology update is having problems with technology, so I know we're a little pressed for time. I'm going to go ahead and get started while we look for the slides, but they are in a handout outside at the table, so if we're not able to get those working, then they are out there for you. My name is Angela Varner, and I'm representing and I'm representing the Municipal Technology Committee today. Technology continues to evolve. And certainly with that evolution, there are different opportunities and different challenges. The MTC was established to help our town make effective use of technology. This is us. The committee did author a five-year technology strategy. It can be found on our committee website. And it's really to help establish the guiding principles for how we want to think about technology choices and decisions. It helps us stay current by focusing on fundamentals such as cloud-first, security, and automation. Some of the activities that the MTC has been involved with over the past year include annual activities like our town survey and our technology budget review, help with operational issues such as network and security reviews, adding a second redundant internet service provider, and we assist with specific projects like refreshing our town website and helping departments evaluate new software. As I mentioned, we do have a few brochures that are available outside. One is for our technology strategy, and the second is for a cellphone signal guide for residents. And finally, the committee would like to thank both Jason and Hassan of our town IT department for the work that they put in every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To start our warrant review today, we conduct what is called a consent part of town meeting. I hope most of you were able to pick up and read my light yellowish-colored handout on your way in today. It's a single sheet, front and back, with the title, Consent List for Enactment Under Bylaw Section 41-6C. If you were not able to pick this up, don't worry. I'll explain it. Under our bylaw, the moderator may propose to you a grouping of articles to be considered together as one block. So that several articles that are considered routine may be voted at one time, saving us some considerable time for other matters on the warrant. It is important to note that as moderator, I only propose the list. You, the Assembly, must approve it. Therefore, before asking for a summary vote, I will go through the list one by one, ask if any voter out there wishes to hold any article on the list. If there is any hold, we will just take that article off the list, and we'll take it up in the usual course. On the back of the handout is the list of the specific articles that I am proposing to group together. Again, after we go through what remains in the consent grouping, or maybe all of it, will be voted on as a single package. Any questions about this process? Okay, then a couple quick additional points about these individual articles as a whole. All of the sponsors of these articles have consented to have their article on this list. So no one, no one is, no one is compelled involuntarily to have an article on the list. But if they're on the list, it's because they're fine with it. Our bylaw to do this process implies that we take these articles out of order. Normally, we go through the warrant in the order that it's printed. And again, if any, if there's any concern about any of them, please just ask for them to be held. All right, let's go through it one by one really quick. Article 1, Acceptance of Pilot Payments. Article 2, Short-Term Borrowing Authorization. Article 3, Contracts for Services in Excess of Three Years, but less than seven. Article 10, Capital Lease Payments for Previously Authorized Leases. Article 11, Budget for Consultants, Pre-Funding of $25,000 for Ad-Hoc Consultant Fees. I'm sorry, I heard a hold on Article 11? Did I miss one on 10? Okay, we're holding 11. Article 16, Transfer Pricing, I'm sorry, Transfer of Paving Funds. Article 17, Annual Funding of OPEB, Our Retiree Benefits. Article 18, Annual Funding of Our Insurance Deductibles. Article 19, Funding for Retiree Accrued Sick Vacation Time. Article 20, Annual Funding of Our Facilities Maintenance Fund. Article 21, The Annual Authorization of Revolving Fund Spending Limits. Article 22, CPA Administrative Article, which is the annual allocation of the overall CPA funding. Article 23, Bond on 84 Main Street, which is the annual payment of a debt approved by town meeting previously. We're holding 23. Is that, did I hear that right? Article 24, Bond on the Library Facade, Annual Payment of Debt for Previously Approved Bonding. Holding 24. And Article 32, Authorizing the Clerk to Amend the Town Code to Fix Typos, Et Cetera. All right. Excellent. So just to recap, what I heard then is to hold 11, 23, 24, and 32. Do I have that correct? All right. In that case, then, the passage of the remainder of the list requires a simple majority. So Articles 1, 2, 3, 10, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22 are on the table. Do, all those in favor of passage of those articles, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. So those articles are considered passed and disposed of. We now move to Article 4. Mr. Rubenstein.
Mayor Rubenstein. I'm Personnel Circle, Chair of the Personnel Board. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? Sees a second, Mr. Rubenstein.
So there are two major initiatives that the Personnel Board engaged in this year that are reflected in the proposed changes to the Salary Administration Plan. First has to do with compensation. The Personnel Board is required every four years to conduct what's called a salary survey. And that involves hiring a compensation consultant to do two things. First, to do a survey of a group of about a dozen comparable towns to see what they are paying for jobs that are the same or similar to what we have in the town. From that information, the consultant then recommends an updated salary schedule for the SAP, which you will see in the revised SAP. The other thing they do is they do a comprehensive review of all of the job descriptions we have for all of the positions in town. And based on that, they modify, they recommend modifications, and in a few instances, recommended reclassifications of some positions. The other initiative we undertook was to take a look at the town's leave policies, specifically vacation leave and sick leave. Based on the current hiring environment, we decided or recommending that we tweak the vacation schedule to make it a little more attractive for people coming to work for the town. The other thing we did was, currently, employees are allowed to carry over a full year's vacation every year. And we determined that that policy was far more generous than any of the other comparable towns. So we're recommending that for new hires, they only be allowed to accrue, to carry over two weeks vacation, which is in line with what all the other communities are doing. On sick leave, as was mentioned earlier, employees are allowed to get a payout of a portion of their unused sick leave when they retire. That policy is also far more generous than any of the comparable communities. So we're recommending for new hires that there be no payout of unused sick leave on retirement. Thank you.
Any discussion, comment, question regarding Article 4? All right, hearing none. This article requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Article 5, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum of $58,259,942, as may be necessary to fund the town's operating budget as follows. Transfer from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, $25,000. Transfer from free cash, $1,602,386. Transfer from overlay reserve, $275,000. Transfer from ambulance fund receipts reserved, $290,000. Transfer from septic betterment fund, $30,097. Transfer from water enterprise fund, $249,770. And that the balance of $55,787,689 be raised and appropriated.
Does it receive a second? Okay, this is our annual town operating budget. Mr. Stivers.
Details of the operating budget proposal are in the warrant. And as I understand it, we will work through that, and Mr. Sumino will look for people who want to talk about various pieces of it.
So similar to what we did with the consent article list just a few minutes ago, our practice is to go through our budget Article 5, line by line. And if anyone wishes to hold any particular line, just sound off and let me know, and we'll come back around to it. Otherwise, we will pass the, or vote on the non-held portions as a block at the end. Any questions about that process? Okay, here we go. Line 114, Moderator. Line 121, Elected Select Board. Line 122, Select Board. Line 131, Advisory, by the way, this begins, this all begins on page 22 of your warrant, if you wanted to flip to it. Line 131, Advisory Committee. Line 132, Reserve Fund. Line 135, Town Accountant. Line 136, Audit. Line 140, Elected Board of Assessors. Line 141, Assessors. 145, Treasurer Collector. 151, Legal. Holding 151. 152, Personnel Board. 153, Special Legal Counsel. 154, is that on 153? Holding 153. 154, Municipal Technology Committee. 155, Technology. 159, Other Operations Support. Holding 159. 160, Elected Town Clerk. 161, Town Clerk. 171, Conservation Commission. 175, Planning Board. 176, Zoning Board of Appeals. 177, Open Space. 182, Economic Development Committee. 192, Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance. 193, Public Accessibility Committee. 210, Police Department. Holding 210. 220, Fire Department. I'm sorry, did I have something on 220? I still can't hear you. All right, please just shout it out. 220 is held. 241, Building Department. 291, Civil Defense. 292, Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspector. 404, Department of Public Works. Holding 40420. 510, Elected Board of Health. 512, Board of Health. 541, Counsel on Aging. 542, Youth Commission. 543, Veteran Services. 610, Library. 630, Recreation Commission. 691, Historical Commission. 692, Memorial Day. 700 through 799, Debt Principal and Debt Interest. 910, Employee Benefits. 941, Court Judgments. 945, Liability Insurance. 300, Electric School Committee. 301, Southborough Schools. 302, Algonquin Regional High School. 304, Assabit Valley Regional Tech High School. 305, Norfolk County Agricultural High School. Okay, just to recap. I heard holds on 151, 153, 159, 210, and 220, and 400 slash 420. So that's a total of five holds. Do I have that right? All right. All right, what did I miss? Well, I'm counting 400 and 420 as the same. Yep, there's two legals. Yeah, I'm counting that. That's other operational. Then there's police and fire. Yeah, DPW has two line items, but it's the same budget, so I count. Hey, folks, if you're gonna, please just let me hear you. I'll read the numbers. We're holding 151, 153, 159, 210, 220, and 400 and 420. That's a total of six numbers, five budgets. All right. The remainder of the warrant, or the remainder of this article, then, is a majority vote, and we will dispose of it with a single block vote at this point. All those in favor of passing the non-held portions of the budget, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay, that motion, or that vote carries. Okay, with regard to Article 151, Legal, would whoever held that come to the microphone? Name and address, and your question or comment is?
Karen Handlin-Schimpkes, Aitlynburg Road. It's difficult to make an objection like this and speak to it without, without sounding unfriendly, but it's meant to be a friendly objection and food for thought for this floor, because the floor holds the authority. So the top reasons to hold legal and special legal, there's been, over the past several years, nonsensical, harmful, questionable, concerning legal services. And granted, the current person in the slot has, you know, picked up for different personnel. This is nothing personal. This is just counter arguments. I think we need a well-rounded firm with the best seasoned municipal employers. I think we need a well-rounded firm with the best seasoned municipal lawyers possible, and I think it's time for a change. I think it's time to encourage a review and replacement. The concerns and questions over the following items: bypassing and undermining town meeting authority. Examples: St. Mark's, the questionable license as reviewed by outside legal experts. Article One, the 2018 anti-corruption article restoring decades-long quorum requirement for the ZBA, overwhelmingly approved by this floor, you voters, but questioned as doomed, quote-unquote doomed, at the AGO level, the attorney general's level by special town counsel. They don't need corrections on their homework in accepting bylaw submissions, and we don't need to and should not pay for unnecessary legal opinion. A standard attorney policy that other towns have in practice will remedy this. The law, Chapter 30B procurement law, per the Chapter 30B manual published by the Inspector General's Office, and I'm quoting, "Chapter 30B does not authorize swaps of real property between a local government and a private party." I'm quoting, "Chapter 30B does not authorize swaps of real property between a local government and a private party." You must take specific steps for exceptions, and the key to this is to qualify a parcel, you have to make sure there isn't another parcel available that might be suitable. That is, for instance, a cleaned-up stump dump or some of the lot, but not an in-use public road that we have paid for and realigned. The license, per the MCL-E, Mass. Continuing Legal Ed handbook, and outside legal expert opinion, it must be revocable at any time. It is not, according to the language that has been used and reused and reiterated into garbage that went into the PNS. The PNS, and this is the showstopper, under the law, correct me if I'm wrong, it must be under consideration, St. Mark's and the Select Board cannot value and cannot claim an equal trade from one site to another. What one is worth, you know, what is, what if one is worth more than the other? Are we leaving money on the table? You're asking this town meeting floor to make that equivalency.
All right.
By law, that must be done by a professional appraiser, of which I am one, for 30 years, using accepted standards of valuation. St. Mark's cannot value the property, the town cannot value the property, and you cannot list it in the PNS as equal.
All right, Ms. Shimkus, I think your point is we, you believe we've received bad legal advice in this regard.
I would like to ask the indulgence of the floor if you would like to vote to hear the balance of what I have to say.
We have an article coming up.
It's very important.
Coming up about.
It's up to the floor at the.
Yeah, I know how it works. Article 12 speaks entirely to this, and if you want to be heard on it now in the guise of the budget item, I'm not going to hear you on Article 12.
Thank you very much, I would like to continue on.
All right. I will take an advisory vote from the floor on this because otherwise I'm inclined to move on to the next speaker. Are we interested in continuing with Ms. Shimkus at this point? All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, Ms. Shimkus, I'm going to have you hold the rest until Article 12.
Thank you.
I think next at the same mic, please.
Jack Barron, 11 Sadie Hut Lane. I just wanted to speak on the legal advice. I've never met the town attorney, I'm sure he's a very pleasant, nice gentleman, but the fact that this project on St. Mark's did not get sent to the planning board for any kind of approval, according to Mass. General Laws, Section 81, nobody in this town builds without authorization. So I don't know how a town attorney could possibly have said either he missed it or he intentionally let it go, "Go ahead and do what you want, you don't need the planning board or the zoning board's authorization." So I don't think we should continue using an attorney for the town who was giving or missing important advice, like following a law that when you're going to build in this town. I put up a shed, I had to get three different pieces of paper. Anyway, that's my comment.
All right, thank you. Over here.
Hi, I'm Paul Carter. I work as a transportation engineer and a civil engineer for a living. I've done it for 30 years. I realign and widen roadways for Massachusetts Highway Department routinely. There is no requirement that a relocated road or right-of-way be approved by planning board. It is approved by the state. There is nothing wrong with the legal advice that was given in this case. The planning board does not have approval of the relocation of a road.
All right, yes, on the topic of the budget item, please.
Debbie D'Nuria, 58 Flag Road, member of the planning board, but speaking as a citizen. I wanted to ask why the legal budget and special legal are combined into one item this year? I had thought that they were separate because if you need special town counsel, oftentimes you go outside of the firm that you're using for maybe a specialist in another firm. So I'm just curious as to why they're combined. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I can take that.
Go right ahead, please.
So prior to FY '23, the town of Southborough had a separate legal counsel firm that was paid separately, and that's why it was a separate budget item. With FY '23, I believe we increased the monthly budget with Mr. Talaman's firm, and so it includes labor counsel now.
Okay, I think I just.
So it's all with one firm?
Right, I think I would just go on record as saying I prefer that special counsel, town counsel be with a separate firm and not in the same firm. I would think that if you maybe have, not getting the results that you need from the first firm, or maybe they're not specialized, it would be good to have a separate.
Understood, so special counsel, there's still room in the legal budget for special counsel if we need to go outside of the firm that we use for counsel and labor.
Thank you.
All right, any other comment or question on, and I'll indicate that I think we are, we're going to be voting on, unless you object, on 151 and 153 together here. I mean, they are quite intertwined, as we just heard. Any other comment or question? All right, all those in favor of passage of those two line items, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. 159, other operations support. I'm not sure who held that, but if you could come to the mic. Name and town, or, yeah, name and town. Name and address, please.
Hi there, Grant Carrington, 58 Flag Road. Just wondering about the 20% increase in what the funds are expected to be used for. Thank you.
If somebody can speak to the increase on that line?
Hi, how you doing?
Oh, hi, John, I didn't see you up there. Go right ahead.
John Parent, Director of Facilities. For the last three years, we've had a contract for electricity costs, basically at about eight and a half cents per kilowatt hour. As I'm sure everyone in the room knows, electricity prices have been skyrocketing, and our contract expires in November. I'm currently working on trying to secure another low rate, but I do have to budget for worst-case scenario. We are optimistic that we will get another great rate, but I do have to budget again for worst-case scenario, and again, we have oil budget a little high, too. But that's why we're up basically almost 20%.
All right, right here. Okay. Any other comment or question on line 159? All right, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, motion carries. Line 210, police department.
Bonnie Fan of 179 Middle Road. I'm wondering, have we addressed the staffing needs of the police department since the salary line went up?
Can you, she asked if you could repeat the last part of the question.
Have we addressed the staffing needs of the police department where the salary line went up?
It's my understanding we have, unless anybody has any data to the contrary. We've had that reviewed with the police department during the budgeting process, and it was my understanding that they were satisfied.
What did you add?
I don't remember the detail of that.
Ms. Faniff, are you specifically referring to the entire police department?
No, I'm asking, did we add any staff to the police department?
I don't, Ms. Faniff, I don't believe we did. The increase is mostly due to the new collective bargaining agreement.
All right, so the, all right. No new staff?
That's my understanding, yep.
Thank you.
All right, yes, thank you, chief. Go right ahead.
Ryan Newell, Chief of Police. We have not added new staff. We did add previously a fifth dispatcher, but that was already accounted for.
Mr. Semino?
Yes, Ms. Cook.
At the final comment, for the record, we've added no hours at all to the proposed budget for fiscal year '24, other than eight hours to the council on aging budget, which was sorely needed. So no new positions, no new hours have been added at all.
All right, thank you. Any other comment or question? All right, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, passage of 210. Thank you, all opposed? Motion carries. Line 220, fire department.
Bonnie Fan of Middle Road again. Have we added additional staff to the fire department? Since there's needs.
No, we have not as part of this budget. I don't know, Chief Achilles, if you're here and want to speak to it, but no.
Can everybody hear the microphones down front? Yeah, I'm starting to feel like that, too. So I don't know if we can get something turned up, Jim, or, but if it's how they're speaking into it, let's just make sure you guys get up close and personal with those mics. Maybe helps to stand up so folks can focus on where you're coming from on it. Yes, chief?
Chief Steve Achilles, Fire Department, also resident, 11 Admiral's Lane. We added no new positions.
All right. All right. Line 220, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, all those opposed? Motion carries. Lines 400 and 420, which appear at the top of page 26 in your warrant, are a single budget. I don't want to be confused about that. It's a single budget, two line items. I'm frankly not sure why that is, but whoever held it, if you can come to the mic and speak to it. Yes, sir?
Peter Lapine, 27 Parkerville Road. I move to amend the DPW budget, increasing it by $24,000 to accommodate the purchase and installation of three driver feedback speed limit signs for Parkerville Road, as described in the proposal provided to the Select Board, March 22 of 2022. Said proposal was approved by the board in June. It was passed to the State of Massachusetts Department of Transportation in July. They indicated their approval in November. And to date, the only signage that's been changed is to swap out the advisory signs about the size of your warrant that previously said 30, now say 25. The importance of the signage cannot be overstated. If you're driving on a street and you come to an intersection, there are no signs, how do you know what to do? Do you yield, or do you just drive through? If you're on a road with no speed limit signs, what's the speed limit? As fast as you can go? So Parkerville Road is extensively used by pedestrians of all sorts. Students use it to walk to near-intrader schools, as well as ride their bicycles. It's heavily used by joggers and other pedestrians walking their pets, or people after they've come home from work. It's important that motorists be advised of the speed limit, and to date, there are effectively no speed limit signs. The ones, there are two signs that are illuminated twice a day for two hours each, so that's a grand total of four hours out of 24 that flash, and the speed limit is effective only when those signs are flashing. Otherwise, you have a sign this big at either end of the street.
All right, so there's a motion to increase the DPW budget by $24,000 to pay for three speed limit advisory signs on Parkerville Road. Does it receive a second? Receives a second.
Driver feedback signs.
Your motion will speak for itself, sir. I apologize if I escorted, hold on. It's not in writing? Oh. So you have to put that motion in writing and give it to the clerk? I just assumed that that had occurred. So while he's doing that, for those who could use a reminder, like I often can, if you're inclined to amend a motion or otherwise change whatever we're talking about on the floor at the time, all motions, all amendments do have to be put in writing and presented to the clerk. So, and you can do that ahead of time. If you know now you're going to do something on an Article, 10 articles from now, feel free to present it.
Can I comment on that motion at this point, or?
Go right ahead.
I think that, you know, that's, it sounds like that's an important thing to get done. There are several streets, I think, in the town, you know, do need speed limit signs, but I'm curious, that three speed limit signs could cost $25,000? Are they, is it something more than just a triangular sign on a post?
I understood these are electronic advisory motion, you know.
Radar signs that measure speed.
Radar feedback, the ones that flash at you if you're going too fast. Not that I have ever seen that. But you, but you may have.
Right. With my glasses, I can see.
Does anybody have a thought on costs? Yes, Kathy?
To just clarify for the hall, the Select Board did apply to the state to reduce the speed limit on Parkerville Road north from 35 to 25. That's done, we got the approval. The signs for the 25 mile an hour speed limit are up. The police department has started to enforce that. They have gone over and started issuing warnings to get people used to the new speed limit. There are speed bumps on Parkerville Road. We knew about Mr. Lapine's request. He's actually got two citizen petitions dealing with the same thing later on. However, Select Board does not feel like we should deal with one sign at a time at town meeting. We are well aware of many issues on many streets in Southborough, not just Parkerville. We've got issues with Parkerville South also. We've got issues with Pine Hill Road. There's a lot of roads that need to be discussed. Our plan is, once we have our new DPW head in place, is to have a holistic discussion with that person as far as some of the issues we have with roads. We've got a lot of dangerous roads in Southborough that we need to continually monitor, and we don't think picking out one road today and doing driver feedback signs, which aren't necessarily effective, is the right way to proceed with this issue in town.
All right, right over here.
Yeah, hi, I'm Justin Avery. I live actually near this street we're talking about. I'm at 8 Wood Street, just over the bridge. I think the difference in what this gentleman's bringing up and the entire town at once is, as somebody who lives on that street, who has been passed on that street multiple times while those signs are flashing, which is next to a school, which is why I think we shouldn't be waiting. next to a school, which is why I think we shouldn't be waiting. I think this is a little bit different, because Parkerville is a long, straight road. I've seen the flashing lights. I always slow down, because I'll be like, oh my God, I didn't realize I was going that fast. That sign tells me. Parkerville's a long, straight road that goes right by a school, and it's treated like a drag strip. And I think there's a big difference between saying, hey, there's a lot of things in Southborough that we could deal with, versus a drag strip by a high school where we're getting passed on a two-lane road. So, I do think singling this one out might be a little bit different than, for example, I live on Wood Street. People run the stop sign all the time. I almost get hit probably four times a week. But I'd rather my truck get hit than a six-year-old kid. So, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I don't know if this helps us or not, but it is the case that the line item that this money would be added to is other charges and expenses. And so, you know, insofar as it's clear, you know, the, why the motion has been raised is because the hope is that the money will be used for these signs. That is not a guarantee. I mean, we can add money to that line item, but we cannot dictate how it's spent. I just want to clarify on that. But to have the money so that if they're paying attention, they spend it how we indicate, that's always good. So, yes, right over here. Well, I need, I need to hear from everybody at least once before we repeat ourselves. Is that you, Mr. Butler? I'm sorry. From this distance, it's not, it's not so good for me.
I get it. John Butler, Ford Davis Road. So, the first point that you made, that adding the money to the budget doesn't have anything to do with deciding what it's spent on, was one thing I was going to say. But the other, the other question that I have is, we're proposing to add perhaps 1% to a budget of 2.4 mil, 2.7 million, a little less than 1%. Do we, do we know that the money isn't there to do this if, if the process that Ms. Cook described before worked its way through? Putting this additional 1% in, or less than that, doesn't guarantee this gets done. Do we know that we can't do it with the money that we already have there?
We do not know that. Big budgets, as you know, usually have a little room to do things that you need to do, so there is no, there's no reason to think that there's not money there to do something like this already.
Thank you.
And Mr. Butler, I believe prior to Ms. Gallagher leaving, she did apply for a grant for additional signs, which wasn't granted by the state, because we still have the outstanding one for the St. Mark's Street Park. So, hopefully, if that gets resolved, we can get grant funding for these signs as well.
Alright, right over here.
Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford Road. So, I have two comments. The first is regarding, I support this. One, the speaker before me mentioned the schools. I think that's very important. But we, as a town, just received truck exclusion for Flag Road. So, now we're, that Waze and other GPS systems will direct trucks down to Parkerville as well. So, I do think additional signage makes complete sense as a priority. And so, the second part of my comment, Mr. Moderator, is Article 35, which explicitly suggests that the Select Board use and install three signs. Is it possible to move that article up to conjoin this discussion with that article?
We don't typically take articles out of order. I'm not inclined to do that. It will be there when we get there. That's the best answer I got for you.
Okay, disappointed, but thank you.
Understood. That is a request, it's not personal to you, Ms. Houlihan, or with regard to this issue, but that's a request that is fraught with peril as soon as I allow it. Yes?
Debbie DeMuri, 58 Flag Road. I just wanted to remind the body that the Flag Road truck exclusion that the previous speaker just spoke about took about, I think, 18 months to do global traffic study, have an on-call engineer take a look at the data, you know, the package that went to Mass DOT. So, that is really quite a long time. Parkerville Road is a similar road, is a flag in that it's a collector road, because it connects the two numbered roads, and there are also several schools. So, I would think children are a priority. I don't think that we can wait, and I agree with this proposal. Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Comment or question on this? Yes?
Andrea Hamilton, 119 Northborough Road. So, I'm very familiar with Parkerville. I've got a kid in Erie right now, so I go up and down it a lot. When I think about Parkerville compared to a lot of the roads in town, I actually find it to be one of the better-tended roads. It's got speed bumps, it has sidewalks, it connects into the sidewalks that we just made significant investment in downtown. So, when I think about where this money would best be spent, I look at the Mary Finn School and sort of the lack of sidewalks as you move along. I think that's Gilmore there, right? We have a lot of areas in town that don't get sort of that street love. So, I'm not inclined to spend more money around the center of town. I'd rather look at where this money can go in other areas of town.
And just as a reminder, no additional money has been allocated. When you say, you know, let's spend it on something else, we may end up at zero here. So, just as a reminder. Yes, one, anything else?
Yes. I would, I would remind the floor that, at the outset, this proposal described driver feedback signs and included a photograph of an identical sign from Middle Road. And I was told the reason we, all we got was the little yellow advisory signs was because of the cost and supposedly no money available. So, but I'm hearing now there is money.
Well, who told you that? No, no, seriously. Let's, let's just, let's steal in facts.
Someone who sits in the front just said there's probably money there.
No, but you said somebody told you there wasn't. Who's that?
Select.
Okay. I mean, you don't have to answer.
Email from Mark Purple specifically.
Okay. Alright. Any other comment or question on this line item? Alright, so the motion is to, we're voting on the motion to add $24,000 to the line item. Depending on, well, not depending, but after that either passes or doesn't pass, we will go back and either pass or not pass the line item itself. This is just to add the money. All those, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. All opposed? Alright, so that motion fails, and we're back to the line item 400 slash 420. This requires a majority vote as well. All those in favor? All opposed? Alright, thank you very much. Mr. Stivers, are you doing our wrap-up?
That's it for the budget, I think. Right?
No, no, hold on, hold on.
I take no credit, but I'm delighted. Thank you.
The town treasurer says we're good, we're good. Finance Director. Article 6. Mr. Dennington.
Andrew Dennington, Select Board. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum of $2,804,097, as may be necessary to fund the Water Enterprise Fund budget as follows. Transfer from water retained earnings, $250,000. And that the balance of $2,554,097 be raised by water rates.
Does it receive a second? Mr. Dennington.
This is the annual article that funds the appropriation of monies to supply water to the ratepayers. And the year-over-year increase is 14%, which reflects largely an increase in the price of water, which is set by the MWRA. Otherwise, really, there are no significant changes. And that's all I got.
Comment or question on Article 6? Alright, requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Article 6 carries. Article 7, Mr. Malinowski.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 7 as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? Let's give our, here we go. Mr. Malinowski, I'm going to have you, I'm going to have you add, or augment your motion with the numbers that are in the warrant, just so we understand that the numbers that we're talking about here.
Making me work here. Alright.
Yeah.
I'm going to move, I move that, Mr. Moderator, I move Article 7 as printed in the warrant to fund road maintenance at a levy for $400,000, sidewalk maintenance at a levy for $50,000, library security cameras at a levy for $15,000, police cruisers at a levy for $148,000, fire durable medical equipment out of the ambulance fund, $20,000, fire ambulance power structure for $55,000 out of the ambulance fund, and the fire PPE for $20,000 out of the ambulance fund.
Alright, does that receive a second? Alright. Go ahead, Mr. Malinowski.
So, good afternoon. Jason Malinowski, 7 Lorenzo Drive, Chair of the Capital Improvement and Planning Committee. This is the annual appropriation capital article that you see each year at town meeting. This list is greatly reduced from our overall recommendation that originally went to the Select Board and advisory for consideration. The main reason for that is ARPA funds have already been allocated by the Select Board to remove a significant number of items, approximately $500,000 worth. So, this is probably the lowest capital appropriation article most of us will see for a long time. The main components that remain for consideration here today are made up of road and sidewalk funds, as you heard, library security cameras, two hybrid police cruisers, and a, three different items being funded for the Fire Department out of the ambulance fund.
Comment or question about Article 7? Okay, this requires a majority vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 8. Mr. Malinowski.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 8 as printed in the warrant for $488,000 for fire and police portable radios.
Does it receive a second? Alright, Mr. Malinowski.
So, this is a capital bonding article to be funded through our ambulance fund. This article actually came to be through multiple conversations with our police and fire chiefs this year, as they went through the capital process. We were able to combine the requests of the fire and police chiefs, which were not both scheduled for this fiscal year, into one article in one purchase that we estimate will save the town 5% on the overall cost, as opposed to doing it over two different periods. This will be bonded and funded out of the ambulance fund.
Mr. Malinowski, I apologize, but apparently there is some language in the, in the motion as printed that is mandated by bond counsel.
I will read the full motion then.
I do need you to read that one as well.
Alright. Mr. Moderator, I move Article 8 to see if the town will appropriate $488,000 to be expended with the approval of the Select Board to pay costs of purchasing radios for the use of the police and fire departments, including payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds, borrowing, and/or otherwise provided, to do or act anything in relation thereto.
Hold on. 30 seconds of civics. So, the warrant, the pink document, has articles, and they warn you, they tell you what we're going to talk about. The actual thing we vote on is whatever the motion is that's spoken. And what Mr. Malinowski just did is read the warrant word for word, but he actually has to read a specific motion that pertains to this warrant article, which the clerk just handed him the text of. So, third time's the charm.
Alright. Next time, someone, I'll have this before I get up here. I move that the town appropriate $488,000 to be expended with the approval of the Select Board to pay costs for purchasing radios for the use of the police and fire departments, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet that appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes to the town therefore.
Does that receive a second? Alright. Anything further to add, Mr. Malinowski?
I hope not.
Yeah. I was thinking the same thing. Anybody else comment or question on Article 8? Yes, go right ahead.
Patricia Burns-Fiori, 10 Winter Street. Could you explain how the $488,000 is affected by the regionalization, whether that is included? I thought new radios were part of the cost of, from the state of regionalizing.
So, these are the portable radios that each police officer and firefighter are issued. It's what they wear on their person. The discussion that will happen later in the meeting related to regional dispatch is completely unrelated. These radios are required and will be, need to be furnished by the town regardless of the outcome of that process.
Alright, thank you. Over here.
Peter Fanoff, 6 Maple Street. Kind of a follow-up to that. I do have questions in regards to this purchase. I do understand the importance of the equipment. With that being said, we're proposing to purchase radios that could potentially require changing with the inter-mobile, the inter-unit dispatch center. So, I ask that this article may be tabled, if that needs to come in the form of a motion to discuss later on.
Well, yeah, you can make a motion to indefinitely postpone the article. We'll, and we'll deal with that, and depending on the outcome, then we'll.
I make a motion that Article 8 be tabled until after the discussion of the regional dispatch center.
Alright, so you're not, you're not asking to, you're asking to delay this article?
That is correct.
Until, okay, Mr. Malinowski, did you just speak to the question of whether this interfaces with regional dispatch?
The police or fire chief are going to answer those questions.
Alright, go ahead.
Steve Achilles, Fire Chief. These radios are interoperable, no matter what system we go with, so they will be consistent with, if we stay with our current system or go to a regional dispatch. Did that answer the question?
It seems to me that you did. Is there some question about that?
I suppose my question is, is based on the regionalization of the dispatch and how future purchases for the community, if they're going to come out through the regional budget, or through the current town's budget, or each town independently. There's a lot of questions in regards to the regionalization, as far as budgetary questions I have, and I don't want to bog this down and slow uptown meeting over the importance of these radios, which I do understand the importance. I'm just looking for the future purpose. Future purchases, and if these are not going to be adequate to work with these other departments, if we're making the right purchase today.
Okay, so that, that, that may be a fair point to make when we get to that article. And so, I think we have, we're in a right, we're in a good spot to vote on this one. Any other comment and question on Article 8? Everybody cruises a microphone right when I say that. But, and then they keep going, it's... All those, this is a, this is a two-thirds vote, because this is a borrowing article. So, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Alright, I declare a two-thirds majority. Article 9.
Me again.
Yeah. Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to appropriate $2,200,000 to be expended with the approval of the Select Board to pay costs of remediating pollution at the Breakneck Hill dump site, as required by an administrative consent order between the town and the Department of Environmental Protection, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds, borrowing or otherwise provided, or do or act anything in relation thereto. available funds, borrowing or otherwise provided, or do or act anything in relation thereto.
I think you just did the same thing, Sam. You gotta read the motion, and it's a borrowing request. Did you just read the article? You got it right here, if you wanna...
I thought I read the article.
I move that the town appropriates $2,200,000 to be spent with the approval of the Select Board to pay costs of remediating pollution at the Breakneck Hill Dump Site, as required by an administrative consent order between the town and the Department of Environmental Protection, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to MGL Chapter Forty-Four, Section Eight-Twenty, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore.
Receive a second?
Second.
All right. Anything further on that, Mr. Stivers?
Yes, I have some slides I wanna show.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Jason?
All right. Like to provide some context for this article. Okay, here we go. In 1980, the town acquired the 88-acre Breakneck Hill former farm property for $225,000. This property, for those not familiar with it, is located south of Route Nine between Breakneck Hill Road and Woodland Road. It's available for town residents to use for walking, picnicking, birdwatching, nature photography, and general enjoyment of open space. It's the home of our community gardens and the site of academic research projects related to bumblebees and butterflies. It's the former home of the locally famous Oreo cows, the Belted Galloways. There's also a small area, as shown in red on this map, that was used as a farm dump, and that's why we're here today. Next slide. Why are we doing this? As with many pre-1980 farms, a small part of the property was used as a farm dump for a variety of trash, including materials that are today categorized as solid waste and regulated. This is a particular concern here because the nearby wetlands are tributary to the Sudbury River Reservoir, which is a protected water supply source under the jurisdiction of the regulations of Mass Department of Environmental Protection, or DEP. Over the past several decades, our Conservation Commission has consulted with DEP and performed periodic testing on the property. While the testing confirmed that there is material at the dump area that should be remediated, this testing also showed, and continues to show, that there is nothing in the water flowing out of the property that violates DEP regulations. Until recently, DEP had recommended that the town's Health Department and Conservation Commission continue to monitor the site for any change in this outflow. In 2019, Conservation Commission again engaged with DEP to discuss what would be required for a permanent solution to the issue, and at that time, new DEP regulations and new DEP staff created pressure for an active remediation process. The town has worked with licensed site professionals and professional environmental engineering consultants and DEP to determine an appropriate remediation plan, and the result of this effort is the DEP Administrative Consent Order that's now in place. This ACO requires specific remediation activities according to a specific timeline, with the upper limit estimated cost of the $2.2 million in the article. We hope that the final cost will be less than this, but we need to plan for the full amount. We won't know the details until we actually start working on the site. If we don't comply with the ACO, DEP can contract independently for remediation and require the town pay, plus likely an applicable fine, so this is something we actually need to do. Needs to begin soon to meet the ACO deadlines, and the remediation work will finalize the ability for town residents to use all of this extraordinary property going forward. Happy to go into more detail about the history of the process, but basically, none of that changes where we are today or what we need to do moving forward. The article has unanimous support of the Select Board and the Advisory Committee. It requires a two-thirds vote. Be glad to answer any questions that people may have about it.
All set, Sam?
Yes, question, all for me?
No, no, I know, I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna have them go through me. All right, our comments or questions about Article Nine? Yes?
Hi, James Nichols Werly, Ninety-four Main Street. Thank you so much, Mr. Stivers. I was lucky enough to sit in on the Select Board Advisory, we're talking about this article. Just to reiterate, that I understand this, because of the administrative consent order, the, the town, we need to do this, because if we don't do this, we will end up paying for it anyways, so...
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for the work on this.
Yes?
Al Hamilton, Thirty-five Pine Hill Road. We're talking about a number of borrowing items today, and I was just hoping that perhaps the Treasurer could tell us what our current bond ratings are, and what sort of interest rate we are likely to have to pay for these borrowings, understanding that the Fed has a will of its own when it comes to interest rates.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Hi, I'm Brian Ballantyne, the town treasurer. So, to answer the question, we do have a AAA rating in town, which is the top rating from S&amp;P. That's good news. Means you save interest every time these borrowings get approved. Your interest rate is usually lower, obviously, so as to what the interest rate may be, we're in kind of a funny, funky environment right now, as most of you know, if you pay attention to the news. So, I would say it has been a rising environment, and what we do is we try to take advantage of when the interest rate is either dipping or lower. You can do that because with all these borrowings, you can temporary borrow, and, and sort of, you have flexibility as to the timeline. It does cost a little extra money to temporary borrow, but it's at a much lower rate than a permanent borrowing, so it's a little bit of a dance you gotta do, but I can't say what the interest rate will be. Alls I can say is we'll monitor it, and we'll definitely try to get the best deal for the town.
Brian, what's the current rate these days?
It's climbing towards the upper fours and near five. It was down, obviously, and the interest rates were almost zero on your checking accounts. It was down to two, two and a half, that area, and so, it is, it is higher.
Thank you. Any other comment or question? Any, anybody? I'm not kidding, I asked, it's eight people at the mic. Are any of you interested in speaking to this article?
No.
Okay. All right, all right, all right. Ah, okay, okay. Late arrivals. It's fourth inning at Fenway. This is a borrowing article, as you heard, this requires a two-thirds vote, all those...
Can I make a comment?
Yes, go right ahead.
Joanne Pearson, One-O-One Newton Street. If we appropriate the $2.2 million, whatever it is, what happens if the project, we approve it, the project is done, and it comes in over that? What happens to that excess money that's been approved?
You mean if the project is less costly?
Yes, yes.
Less costly? We don't borrow it, we don't spend it?
It, so it's not spent, but where does it go?
So, the article...
We don't borrow it either. We don't borrow it, so we only will borrow what we need to pay for the project, once we know what the actual cost is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is an authorization to borrow, but it's, it's not a, you know, the borrowing comes at, after we know how much. Up to that amount, up to that amount. Good question. All right, two-thirds vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? I declare a two-thirds majority.
Mr. Sumino?
Yes?
Can I comment that between my two articles, that's the fastest $60 million I've spent in a long time? Thank you, thank you.
You're not up for reelection, Sam, I bet you wouldn't have said that otherwise. All right. Article Eleven was on the consent list, but it was, but it was held, so we take it up in the usual course now. Article Eleven, Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of hiring consultants, engineers, water quality specialists, and/or environmental consultants by various town departments.
So, receive a second? All right, Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. This article allows town departments, with the approval of the Select Board, to hire outside expertise when the need arises in the past. Town, it has not been funded since fiscal year '21, it has an $800 balance in it. It's been used for a variety of things, early engineering for, I believe, the townhouse, some went towards a traffic study, some of it has been used by the Conservation Commission. So, it's basically, if something comes up during the year that we need expertise on, it allows the town the flexibility.
Thank you. Comment or question? Yes, go ahead.
Debbie Dumiria, Fifty-eight Flag Road. I'm not opposed to this, but I'd like a little more detail about which towns or which departments are able to use this. The engineering firm that you talked about, that was a specific contract out of the DPW. Is this for the DPW, or is it for any other departments or...?
All town departments. Like I said, it's, in the past, it's been used for Conservation Commission, it was used for the early engineering for the townhouse as well. So, it's, it's, any department can come, whether it be Capitol, Planning Board, Concom, ZBA, any that has a need for expertise, we need the ability to be able to fund.
Any other comment or question on Article Eleven? All right, this requires a majority vote, all in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? That passes. Article Twelve is a, just by way of housekeeping, before we get the first motion on Article Twelve. It is a three-part article. You'll see it on the screen here in a second. Two of which are land conveyances, one of which is regarding a road, the right-of-way, all of which theoretically stand on their own. You could vote, you know, we could pass one or more of those and not others, et cetera, and for that reason, it makes sense to me to divide this article, so that we take each of those possibilities up one at a time, because the outcome of one may obviously dictate what happens next. So, that's my intention. What's up, Jim? Sorry, we have a pre-submitted amendment, and I'm just making sure I understand it. All right, the, the amendment is, is relevant to the third part of this article, so we'll get to that if and when we get to that. So, Ms. Cook, do you wanna make a motion on the first part, please?
I do, thank you. I move that the town convey a portion of land that is a portion of St. Mark's Street, as shown on plans on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into agreements for the conveyance of such land on such terms as the Select Board shall determine.
Does that receive a second? All right, Ms. Cook.
So, Jay, can you get our first slide up that shows the pink and the blue? So, good afternoon, everyone. This is a nice crowd for Saturday afternoon. So, I am Kathy Cook, I'm the current Chair of the Select Board. This is Andrew Dennyton, who is one of my colleagues on the Select Board. We are going to be sharing the duty up here to explain Articles Twelve and Thirteen. This is gonna take me a few minutes, so please bear with me. This, the project itself is fairly simple to describe, the details behind it are not, so I need to get through this, because there has been a lot of controversy about this project, and it's, it's, it's gotta be said, so bear with me, we'll take questions after this. So, today I'm gonna be discussing both Articles Twelve and Thirteen as they are related. These articles culminate in a small park being built adjacent to the library parking lot on a piece of land that we commonly refer to as a triangle. We ask that you support both articles. We need a two-thirds vote on Article Twelve, all three parts, as it involves a land swap. The reasons to support these articles are: Number one, we end up with a lovely small park in the center of town funded by a state grant. Number two, we swap for land that is twice as large as that that we are giving up. Number three, we end up with a contiguous piece of land with the library land that can be used down the road for future library expansion if needed. Number four, we solve and/or greatly improve several drainage issues that currently exist in the area. Article Twelve asks the Hall to approve a land swap with St. Mark's School and discontinue a portion of the existing St. Mark's Street. Article Thirteen provides a funding for the park that will be located on the land to be received from the swap.
All right, Ms. Cook, I'm gonna, fairness, we, I'm gonna give you some latitude, because these two articles are adjacent to each other in the warrant, so we're not moving ones, per se, but let's, let's see how far we get on the first part of Twelve.
Okay. Rest of it, I think, is Article Twelve.
Sure.
After I explain the history of the project, Andrew will discuss the work done by the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group and walk you through the conceptual design that the group unanimously approved at their most recent meeting. There are some here today that are very familiar with this project, that is the subject of these two articles, but there are also many here today that are not familiar with either the project and/or the details. Therefore, I will provide a brief history of the project to give the Hall the facts you need to determine your vote. Massachusetts implemented a program in June 2020 that they named Shared Streets and Spaces Program. The program was designed to allow towns to quickly implement improvements to plazas, sidewalks, curbs, streets, bus stops, et cetera. Since its inception, the program has awarded $33 million to 183 towns. Southborough received $290,000 from the program in 2021. The grant was intended to fund the creation of a small park at Park on the Triangle. The grant request was approved on February 21, 2021. The approval required for the funds to be spent was May 31. However, we got an extension, so the extended deadline was December 31, 2021. The park was intended to be part of a larger project meant to solve and/or improve three existing problems in the area. First, the flooding problem that exists at the current intersection of St. Mark's Street and Marlboro Road. Second, the recurring flooding problem of the library. And third, the turning radius onto St. Mark's Street with fire trucks and ambulances in mind. Jay, can you show the picture of the flooding? Okay, that's the flooding problem at St. Mark's Street and Marlboro Road. To solve these three problems, the project required swapping land with St. Mark's School in order to move St. Mark's Street a few hundred feet to the south. Doing so would hopefully solve the St. Mark's Street flooding problem, this, and the turning radius problem for the larger emergency vehicles that needed to access the townhouse area in St. Mark's Circle. The park design would include rain gardens and a new drainage system that would collect the excess water that accumulates in the triangle area and divert it away from the library to the newly installed pipes that run down Marlboro Road and Cordible Road. The new road design would also include curbs and other features that would block the water from running down the hill to the west and northwest of the library, and direct it to catch basins on the new road. Please keep in mind that the library sits in the bottom of a bowl. The library's last major flood occurred on September 18, 2018. The insurance claim for that flood alone was in excess of $600,000, and the downstairs floor that includes the children's library was closed for six months. To try to improve the library water issues, improvements were made during the Main Street Transportation Improvement Project that diverted water away from the library's south and east sides. The second phase of the water improvement plan included installing two drains on the triangle that would work with rain gardens installed as part of the new park and divert water from the north side of the library to the new pipes, again, running down Marlboro and Cordible Roads. The third issue this project was intended to solve is improving the turning radius for the new road. The turning radius for the new road is designed to be about 90 degrees. Fire Chief Steve Achilles was consulted on this issue and is supportive of the moving of St. Mark's Street. The new road will provide easier access to both the townhouse area and to St. Mark's Circle than the current road. road currently does. I've also spoken with a local civil engineer who confirmed that the best design practices today require a 90-degree turn and not the Y-intersection we currently have. So that's the background of the three problems this project was intended to either solve and/or greatly improve. The new park requires a land swap with St. Mark's School. We need the Triangle for the park. We will give the school the part of the current St. Mark's Street we no longer need. Southborough receives land approximately twice as large as it gives up in the swap. And Southborough would end up with a contiguous piece of land next to the library. St. Mark's would be able to expand its parking lot with the additional land it receives. The library sits on land that has a deed restriction required by the landowner that requires a library. The library may want to expand its footprint in the future. Adding the contiguous piece of land to it would allow an option to expand that does not exist without the swap. Because of the 123121 grant deadline, the Select Board executed a reciprocal license agreement in the fall of 2021 allowing each party to use the other's land to perform their intended work as a temporary means to get the project started due to the grant deadline. The Select Board intended to bring to the next town meeting an article to exchange the reciprocal license agreement for perpetual easements on each parcel. Easements are required to be approved by a vote of town meeting. The easement article was included on the May 2022 warrant. At the May 2022 town meeting, significant disapproval from the Hall was expressed about the entire project. As a result, the Select Board asked for the easement article to be indefinitely postponed. The postponement vote failed, and then the easement article failed. The major criticisms on the project at the time were: one, the town should not spend state-provided funds on property the town did not own. Two, the town should not have executed the reciprocal license agreement. It was viewed by some as an end-around town meeting approval of land transfers. Three, the park could be located on the graves of indigenous people. And four, the project was too expensive and not the best use of limited road funds. The Select Board listened to the concerns expressed at the May 2022 town meeting we met on May 31 and discussed the issues raised. After that discussion, the Select Board unanimously agreed that the better path forward was to finish the park. At that point, significant funds had been expended to build the new road, install the drainage pipes underneath the planned rain gardens, and to design the park. The steps the Select Board agreed to undertake to address the concerns raised were: one, to expand the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group's charge to include the full design of the park. The Working Group's charge was to recommend a park design that satisfied a plurality of interested residents. The Park Working Group ended up with seven members from a variety of backgrounds, including Andrew Dennington from the Select Board. The Working Group met 21 times since May 31, 2022, including a public forum on Saturday, November 12, 2022. Their most recent meeting was on March 6, at which they voted unanimously to approve the park conceptual design that you're about to see. To deal with the issue of spending funds on private property, the Board agreed to attempt to negotiate a straight land swap with St. Mark's School. The Board was successful in that endeavor and signed a memorandum of understanding with the school this month. The memorandum of understanding voided the reciprocal license agreement previously executed that troubled so many. Third, St. Mark's School agreed to fund a study of the Triangle land to determine whether human remains were buried beneath it. The school hired a well-known archaeologist, Dr. Greg Walworth, to do the study. He concluded that there are no human remains buried beneath the proposed park land. If you want to view a detailed report of his findings, please watch the February 16 meeting of the Historic Commission. The state has accepted Dr. Walworth's findings. The very capable chair of the Historic Commission, Kevin Miller, is here today and can answer any specific questions about the study itself. In order to meet the request to build a frugal park, the Working Group has given a budget of no more than $250,000 for the project, including final design cost. It is not easy to design anything by a large committee, including a park. The Select Board sincerely thanks them for their heroic work as far as what was done to get us to where we are today. The Select Board felt that the $250,000 budget was appropriate because the state grant was $290,000. The Select Board believes that they have listened to the criticisms of this project and made substantial changes to the project as a result. The Select Board also acknowledges the significant controversy that this project has engendered and has learned a few lessons from this experience. At no time was there any intent to go around town meeting with respect to the land transfer. The sole reason that that reciprocal license agreement was executed was the timing for the use of the grant funds. Today, we are asking the town meeting vote to complete the park project by supporting the three components of Article 12. This article includes decommissioning the part of St. Mark's Street that will become St. Mark's School property if the article passes. The Select Board has signed an agreement that nullifies the reciprocal license agreement executed in 2021. As a result, we have no legal right to work on the St. Mark's School land other than restoring the St. Mark's property as the parties may agree to its pre-project condition if Article 12 is not approved. Here is a picture of what the land intended for the park looks like today. So Jay, can you show what I call the ugly rock picture? So that's what we've got today. It's ugly. It's in the center of town. This is the most beautiful part of Southborough, and that's what we're looking at and have looked at now for quite a while. The Select Board does not believe it is realistic to attempt to put Humpty Dumpty back together again. The drainage for the rain gardens has been installed. It's there. And the new street has been carved in. We believe that the park would be a beautiful addition to the area and be used by all, including for some of the library's children's programs. We also believe that the cost to finish the park would be less in total than attempting to restore the Triangle to its pre-project state, if you could even do that, because we would have to return the $290,000 grant to the state in addition to spending an unknown but significant amount of money trying to restore the Triangle to its pre-park state. This entire project conception today has taken over two years. We need to complete the project now and move on. The Select Board has many, many projects ahead of it and decisions in front of it and only so much bandwidth to deal with all the issues under its purview. And we have striven mightily to listen to what we were told a year ago and have spent hours and hours, including the committee's work, to try to listen to that and make the changes that those warranted criticisms ask us to do. The contractor for the park is expecting to return in June to finish all of the work left under their contract, which includes the new road, finishing the Main Street work, and repaving Cordova Road past the Public Safety Building. If we are not ready for the contractor in June, they have stated they will remove the park work from their contract. We will then be required to start over with a new contractor at who knows what cost. Before I turn this over to Andrew, I'd like to set the record straight about a few points that we've heard frequently and loudly over the past few weeks from individuals who are opposed to this project. One, it's been claimed that Mass DOT is upset about this project. They want their grant money returned. This is absolutely not true. Mass DOT has no issue with how we have spent the grant money, and in fact, they've urged us to get this project completed as soon as possible. Two, it's been claimed the project's primary goal is to build a parking lot for St. Mark's School. This is absolutely not true. The primary objective for the project was always to complete stormwater infrastructure that will prevent the periodic and very costly flooding at the library and at the intersection of St. Mark's Street and 85. Relative to the parking lot issue, St. Mark's had a parking lot in this area before the project began, and they will have a slightly larger parking lot after the project is completed. Before the project began, the town had a road in this location, and after the project is completed, the town will still have a road and a very nice park to go with it. It's been claimed that spending public money on private property for this project is illegal. This is also not true. Public money can be spent on private property where it serves a public purpose, and the town has done this numerous times in the past. Chestnut Hill Farm, 84 Main Street, St. Mark's Church Bell Tower, and the 911 Field are recent examples. It's been claimed that St. Mark's caused the flooding at the intersection of St. Mark's Street and Cordova Road by building the stone wall that's there. If you view the intersection with Google Street View Application's history feature, you'll see that the flooding at the intersection predated the installation of the wall. These statements are not based on fact and do not lead to the best path forward for the town. You've also seen the handout possibly that the Planning Board put on the table today. We have discussed some of these issues with the Planning Board already, and we're confident that we can resolve all of the concerns as we move forward with this project. Regardless of what may have been done in the past to avoid some of the difficulties with this project, Articles 12 and 13 represent what your Select Board and your advisory committee and your library trustees and many other informed residents believe is the best path forward for this project. We ask for your support of these articles. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Andrew Dennington, my colleague on the Select Board. Andrew represented the Select Board on the Park Working Group. Andrew will describe the work the Working Group did and show you the park conceptual plan that they approved.
Thank you. Good morning, or good afternoon, Andrew Dennington from the Select Board. And I'm going to just speak very briefly about the design piece of this project. So first, what is the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group and why was it formed? The reason it was formed is because actually, if you go back and look at the pink and blue plan that shows the land that we're proposing to swap, it's also a handout that we've got. We heard some concerns that people didn't really like the original design of the park that was reflected in the engineering plans that were created for this. In particular, we heard some concerns from some key stakeholders, including the library trustees and the Historical Commission. So we decided, there it is. You see, there's a kind of a circle in the middle there, and we heard some concerns that it was too big. It's too much hardscape in the center of town, right next to the old burial ground and the library. We should have kind of a softer, more natural-looking park. So we created the Working Group to get more public input on the design of the park that we were looking to build. And the Working Group had representatives of the Board of Library Trustees, the Open Space Preservation Commission. We had two representatives from the Historical Commission, myself from the Select Board, and also a representative from the Southborough Public Accessibility Committee, which is our ADA committee. We also had the participation of Mr. James Nichols Worley, who you heard from earlier today. He's a student at St. Mark's, and he's also the proponent in one of the later articles about a voting age. So as Kathy said, we met many, many times in some lengthy evening meetings, over 20 times between February 2022 and March 2023. And really, the work that we did got more kind of detailed after the archaeological survey was completed, and I believe it was after Labor Day of 2022 that found that there was no significant finding that prevented a park from being built on this location. The next kind of key event that happened was, and now actually if you could turn back to the bubble plan showing the proposed design park, was we had a public forum on the morning of Saturday, November 12, 2022, at the Public Safety Building. And I thought we had a fairly good turnout that filled up most of the training room in the Public Safety Building. And we heard some concerns and also ideas on park design from some residents, including Patty Fiori was there, and she had a design, put together a design for what she had called like a tricentennial park, I think was the name. And this really helped to kind of inspire the current design for the park. And Patty had also suggested that you can do this in conjunction with completing a history walk in the center of town. That could be kind of like a Southborough Freedom Trail, which was a path connecting all of the town's major historical assets in the center of town. As you know, this is right next to the old burial ground and also the library and the town hall and the Congregational Church. So the most significant features of this are, one, you can see there's a central plaza up there, kind of towards the west, and that's a, can serve as a gathering place for local events and historical commemorations, kind of a little bit of equivalent to like the All Wars Memorial, which is the intersection of Common Street and Main Street right now. And it can be also, you see, there's a space there for storytime for the library. Actually, right now, the current location of the storytime is above the town's, is the library's septic system, so this would be an improvement above that. There is a softer landscape than there was in the original version. We have, the trees are intended to be heritage trees, trees that can grow up over a long time so that they can be big shade trees that can replace some of the ones that were taken down as part of clearing the land. There's also a windbreak next to the old burial ground to accommodate some concerns that the Historical Commission had expressed about that. So me personally, I like this idea. I think I'm excited about the idea of building a new historically themed park right in the center of town. I think that the timing of it would be great because another thing that we're trying to do is to start to prepare for the town's tricentennial in 2027. And as a preview of coming attractions, if anyone wants to volunteer for the tricentennial committee, happy to hear from you. I think this is in the long-term best interest of the town. I think that completing the project gets us a very attractive park and that not completing the project would just keep us with the current ugly situation or something worse that we may not even be able to foresee. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are talking about the first item in the motion on Article 12. Question or comment at this point on that? Yes?
Do I have to say who I am?
Yes.
Okay. David Perry, 22 Main Street. I'm just astonished at this presentation, you know, this effort to make an ugly eight-legged octopus appear nice. This project has a history which is the worst history of any project in the town of Southborough, and it is still going on today, as I will explain to you. Misleading comments and misleading handouts. This project started as an effort to provide a parking lot for St. Mark's School, period. That was the sole purpose of this project, to simply provide a parking lot for St. Mark's. That's why they were going to close down the intersection and build the new intersection further south, so St. Mark's could use the existing road up north for their parking lot. That's where it all comes from. This park is irrelevant. It comes out of a state grant. It is completely disassociated with the road construction and the parking lot. Now I'm going to go now to the handout, the speech and the handout, because it's full of errors, and it's incredibly misleading, and I think it's deliberately misleading. First of all, paragraph one of the selectman's handout, you talk about the land area. The town gets twice the land area. You omitted one very significant fact. The land the town gets is grass. It's grass. The town St. Mark's get is an improved road worth hundreds of times more than grass.
All right, let's keep it focused, please.
Number five, paragraph number five, flooding. The words used are "would end the flooding", and we had that incredible photograph of a gigantic flood. You know, it's just absurd. The flooding has already been solved. It has been solved already. There is a 12-inch pipe underneath Route 85, underneath Marlboro Road, from Main Street all the way up to the intersection. If you drive there, you can see the manholes in the ground. But you see, the manholes deliberately haven't got catch basin covers in them. They've got flat steel caps so that the water doesn't go into the drains, so we have flooding today. This is a deliberate deceptive move by our Select Board and DPW. All you have to do is take off the flat steel lids and put in a catch basin lid, and the flooding is gone. The money has been spent. The town has spent $100,000 putting drains underneath 85. And by the way, that flooding was actually caused by St. Mark's. It's a fact. They built a wall in our right-of-way using a license which also is illegal. St. Mark's caused the flooding. They should have solved it. They should have paid for it. But we paid $100,000 to put new pipes up 85. So all these photographs of flooding are completely fictitious nonsense and deliberately intended to mislead you because the flooding has gone. It's finished. It's over. The pipes are under 85 now. Now, let's look at the second item under paragraph five. It will improve public safety. This also is a completely false claim. The new intersection will actually be more dangerous than the existing one. Why? Because if you drive up there, you'll see two enormous trees, probably 24, 36 inches diameter. Diameter, huge trees, north and south of the existing intersection. North and south of the existing intersection and close to the intersection in Marlboro Road, right-of-way. They block sight distance. If you, just if you go in your car and come out where that road is supposed to be, you can't see north and south. It is more dangerous to move the intersection. You're not going to cut down those trees, are you? About the last two trees we have on 85. So that's a false claim. Then let's go to the $290,000. We skipped across the fiasco here, the illegal doings by certain people in this town, illegally misusing $290,000 of state money, misusing it and spending it on a road and a parking lot.
Mr. Perry, let's stick to facts. Mr. Perry, let's, let's stick to facts.
I am seeking to facts. That money was spent on the road and the parking lot. That is why the town got in trouble with the state. The 290 was misspent, and now we have to come up with 290. You see, because that's what we're doing, aren't we? We're coming up with 290 because we should have it available to us, but we worried spent it illegally. All this was not explained. I have spoken to Mr. Lorian, the Director of State DOT, Uster. He has told me he is so furiously angry at this town. He told me, "I wouldn't like to live in your town." That's a quote. That's a direct quote. He said, "As far as I'm concerned, you can take the 290 and you can spend it on a park where we intended for you to build a park, which was along the Main Street corridor, not up in the triangle." The state intended the money for a park along the Main Street corridor. And he told me, David, "You can apply and you can come back to me and we can relocate the park somewhere along the corridor where it was intended to be spent." Why is it up there? Why is there a park up there? For one reason and one reason only. Guess who put it up there? Karen Galligan. Enough said. The park site, that is an abominable site for a park. It is next to a highway. It's next to Route 85, traffic. But above all, it's so short-sighted because that land will be needed to expand the library parking lot. This is all, this is not new news. The library needs more parking, so parking has to be expanded north into the park. So you're going to spend $250,000 and then dig it up? It's ridiculous. Okay, I'm going to close up here. What happens if we, we should, my opinion is we should just stop, not spend one more cent on this project. It is a disaster from beginning to end. We do not need to spend another dollar. They have omitted to tell you the amount of money being spent on the new road. It's about a quarter million. That money should be spent on roads elsewhere in town which need repairs, not on an artificial new road we don't need up here. What will happen if we say no? It's obvious, St. Mark's School will clean up the site themselves. It's their front yard. They own the property. It's not our property. And they will build their own parking lot on their land. They own the triangle. They own that whole rubble pile. They had used it for parking for decades. There is no earthly reason why St. Mark's cannot build their own parking lot on their own land at their own expense.
All right. We, we have, we have had an influx of folks, and so the cafeteria is now staffed and open. There are two tellers in the cafeteria, DeBontchou Sadpathi and Getika Sadpathi, and a deputy moderator, Roger Challen, that have all been sworn. Okay, right over here, please.
Hi, Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. There's a lot not to like about this project, a lot, about the, where it is, what it is, and how it's been done. There's just no, no denying that. I, I do want to point out that I believe that the, in addition to the 250,000 that's being asked for, that there would be an additional sum that I believe is on the order of 120,000 to complete the road and sidewalk, which is coming out of, out of essentially the town's Chapter 90 paving agreement. So we're talking about a total of about $370,000 in total, which is all coming out of our pockets. That being said, this is a mess we made. We got no choice in the matter, as far as I can see. I think that any other course of action is likely to get me in trouble with my, my, my mom. You know, she said, "You made the mess. You clean it up." We made the mess. We may not like the way it was done, but we collectively, as, as a government, made the mess. I believe that, regrettable as it is, we have to clean it up. And I believe that this is the least expensive way to do it, and it puts this behind us. Heaven help us, I, I hope we have learned our lesson, but I think we should support these articles.
All right, right over here.
Matt Probst, 31 Woodland Lot Road, and I'm fully in favor of this article. This, some money will be, need to be, need to be spent either way to change the situation, try to rectify or go back to the mess it was before. And I believe that this article moves, moves the line forward in terms of, provides enhancements to our library, it provides a nice, clean space, and it, it solves the flooding problem of the road right there. It also helps our emergency vehicles, because that's a very tight intersection that it is, and I'm strongly in favor of this article. Thank you.
All right, right over here.
Patricia Burns Fiori, 10 Winter Street. I've spent a lot of time looking at and into the project regarding this intersection change, St. Mark's parking lot and town park. Last year at town meeting, we all decidedly disagreed with the then-current Select Board's plan to use a license to do work on the project and seek permission after. In fact, the previous Select Board Chair made it perfectly clear a positive vote was not needed on the easements as there was a license agreement. Taxpayers did not agree, and work was stopped after town meeting. Although the previous Select Board and his, and Chair had no tolerance for discussion or dissension on this project, the current Board and Chair have responded and listened, and they're making a very solid, valid attempt to write the vote as much as possible. My primary and first objection to this project from the very beginning was that the public taxpayers' money was being spent on private property. I've been pretty adamant that cannot happen. The Select Board listened, and a land swap was negotiated with St. Mark's, and now each party will own their respective parcels. Others were concerned about possible Native American burials on or near the site, and people listened. St. Mark's agreed to spend $20,000 on an archaeological survey, and it was done. VHB was hired to design a park, and plans were presented by the working group in a public forum for thoughts and comments. I objected to the grand scale, overuse of hardscape, and the cost to implement such a design, and that a history walk, which was the primary intention of the $290,000 state grant, was nowhere to be seen. The working group listened, put many, many hours into discussions of the best way to move forward, and agreed to a much simplified design that would create a starting point for a history walk. And by the way, a point of history, back in the early 1700s, there were three things that were needed to request the approval from the governor to incorporate a town. And each one of these things, a mustering ground, a meeting hall, and a burial ground, will be visible from the location of the main plaza in the park, creating an ideal starting point for a history walk and a discussion of Southborough's history. This year, when the MOU negotiated by our town council in St. Mark's included an nearly identical license to last year, I urged the Board to throw out the entire license agreement as it would be seen as an end around town meetings vote and suffer the same fate as last year. They listened. They opted to take out reference to the license agreement, which essentially leaves no Plan B. And furthermore, they insisted language in the MOU be adjusted so that it was clear each party would pay for any construction on its own property, and the town would not shoulder the cost to demolish a street nor create a parking lot for St. Mark's. This was a very important detail. On many occasions, I've asked the current Select Board and St. Mark's Street Park Working Group to listen, and they have. This project was a mess from the beginning, and it's time we clean up the mess both literally and figuratively, move on, and work to ensure that this never happen again. Any other decision will cost taxpayers more money, will end up with an unsightly pile of dirt in the middle of our downtown, and potential ill will with state for having to return a $290,000 grant. I feel that compromise is the essence of a democracy and compromises what is needed now. We should finish this project in the most cost-effective way for taxpayers, who will end up with an attractive, usable space for all, and one that is owned by the citizens and taxpayers of Southborough.
All right, next, that's the same mic. By the way, can the folks in the cafeteria hear me? Can you like just wave or something? If you're, okay, good, thank you. I'm watching that mic as well. Go ahead, right here.
Hi, James Nichols Worley, 94 Main Street. I am a member of the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group, and I'd just like to, to commend, because we had a lot of people come to our meetings, come to our public forum back in November 2020. And I just have to say, when we started this process back in, in February of 2022, there were a lot of questions. There were a lot of unknown unknowns and a lot of unknown unknowns. But over 20 meetings, a lot of very useful public comment, I think we've gotten to a place where this is an attractive part. And now, just, just as me, an individual, I'd like to, to highlight a few things about this, is that there's been a lot of history behind this, but I think there is a great path to move forward. And I'd like to highlight reporting from February of this year in mysouthborough.com. Comment from the Mass Department of Transportation. This is publicly online. According to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, District Highway Director, "In reviewing the grant," this is a quote, "In reviewing the grant expenditures for the St. Mark's Street project, Massachusetts Department of Transportation has determined that the funds were spent appropriately on those items related to the grant as defined in the application, and that other road funds, including Chapter 90, were spent appropriately as discussed." If there's other comment disparaging this project from the Department of Transportation, I have yet to seen it publicly reported. Currently, for the past, as long as I can remember, this is, the land was already used as a parking lot. That, that this park is solely caused by a desire to build a parking lot doesn't make any sense because there was already a parking lot there. This is our chance to turn what is currently a pile of dirt, rocks, rubble, and somewhere I have tripped a few times running for cross-country, into a usable park that you can walk through, that you can enjoy, that you can sit in under the shade, that students and children at the library can go to read instead of over a septic tank, that we can finally replant some trees, and that we can clean this up. I, I'll be supporting this. I mean, after all the work we've put in, after everything we've been through, I, I really hope we can support this today. Thank you.
All right. Same, same microphone.
I'm Erin McMurray. I live at Two Ledge Hill Road, my property about Smallborough Road. I'd like to speak in favor of the project. This is a, an area of town that I drive through many times a day. I've lived here for nine years. The flooding is real every time it rains. The photograph that was shown is an accurate photograph. It's not some aberrant piece of propaganda designed to convince anybody of anything. I have two small children in town. I am certain that the library, the children's library specifically, has been closed on two occasions for several months at a time due to flooding. Right now, what we have there is, in addition to rampant flooding, we have this pile of rocks. I've, I've seen young people climbing on these rocks. It's a liability. And to hear the comment that it's St. Mark's yard, I would argue that it's actually our yard. In fact, I'm somewhat troubled by the continued idea that St. Mark's is not part of our town. And I will say that I am in no way affiliated with St. Mark's. To that end, I think this park would add a lot to our community. We have actually quite an unofficial positive relationship with St. Mark's. They allow us to use their fields for Heritage Day, for the Food Truck Festival. To the previous speaker's point that it has been a parking lot, in fact, it has been a parking lot that many of us have almost gotten stuck in the mud in that parking lot prior to any beginning, any digging up of any of rocks as we currently see them. I take issue with the characterization of putting the park next to a highway. I don't think anybody thinks that, although certainly Route 85 is a state road, when we have Heritage Day and we have our Food Truck Festival, nobody is speeding down that road as if it's 495. That is also language that was used when the town was trying to decide what to do about the Main Street reconstruction project. It's loaded language in this context, and I want to point out that it, I don't think that's a fair characterization. That is certainly a reasonable place to have a park. I will leave my comments at that.
Thank you. Same microphone.
Hi, my name is Paul Carter. I spoke earlier. I'm a civil engineer, a transportation engineer. I've lived in this town for 30 years. I raised my family in this town. I love this town, as many of you do. So what I do for a living is I design and manage road and bridge and bike paths and park projects. The exact project that was done in Main Street, that's what I make my living doing. Okay? I don't think that Southborough has changed that much in the last 30 years. We've grown from 6,000 people to 10,000 people. We've built two new schools. We've added and renovated two other schools. I think that the town owns, owes Karen Galligan an apology and a, the work that Karen and Marty Healy and the dedicated officials and the tireless efforts of the committee members that volunteered, that brought millions of dollars, millions of dollars, to the town of Southborough for the, and also replaced the antiquated 1950s area traffic signal that was in the center of town with a state-of-the-art traffic signal. I commend the town for not fighting that. Sometimes would fight. We don't want any traffic signals in our town. But we got behind that, and now we have something that is a great asset to the town. We successfully in-approved and completed the land swap, swap of the over 100-acre golf course for St. Mark's from the, and traded them an old police station and a fire station for that. This project, this project is the same thing, but a little smaller. Okay? This is, we're getting, giving them 15,000 square feet. They're giving us 30,000 square feet. Okay? Article 12 asks for the approval of the land swap necessary for the realignment, the safety of, of that intersection. This is the kind of project that I do week after week to, to realign a side road that comes in as a Y intersection, which in order to be able to see, you have to turn your neck way around here in order to see whether there's any cars coming. This is routinely what we do to improve intersections. So bringing this to a 90-degree is, well, I hate to use these terms, but as a transportation engineer, this is a no-brainer. I think a lot of good points have been made this evening, so improving the safety and the parking is very important. Existing on-street parking for the ballfields needs to be accommodated in off-street parking. The, the proposed park is going to allow for celebrating the historical heritage of Southborough while, for providing historical and educational markings, to provide a connection to the town historical museum and building. It's going to build on the progress that we have been making to improve the town of Southborough by improving safety, adding a new park, and in the, and the town center to bring the town center up to the level of the surrounding towns. We know that, that Southborough is a great place, okay? But it hasn't looked like that, okay? So now, now we're bringing it to the level of the surrounding towns of Hopkinton, of Northborough, of Westborough, maybe even Sudbury and Whalen, heaven forbid. Okay? So Karen, Karen and the town officials have laid the foundation for creating complete streets. Now, complete streets is the main initiative the Mass Highway Department is at this point, which is adding bike lanes and sidewalks to existing streets, okay? This is, as part of that initiative, there's going to be sidewalks built all over this town, all over this town. That's right, but they're going to be, and this is the momentum that we have to keep moving forward, not starts and stops. moving forward, not starts and stops and steps backward because, you know, of some personal, some personal objective, okay? The drainage improvements had to be made, okay? The catch basins that were added out there will only be effective if the road is built. We're getting more intense and more frequent major flood from storms, okay? Climate change, they're not, they're only going to get worse, okay? So I asked town meeting to approve the land swap, the intersection realignment, and the park, so that the town can move forward with the sidewalks throughout the town. Also, I would like to say that the planning board comments regarding this project, as I said, for one thing, this realignment, this roadwork does not require planning board approval, okay? It's not a separate site. It's not a site project. Yes, it's important that the planning board be on board, but the planning comments are details on specific plans for construction, which can be addressed by working with the St. Mark's Realignment Committee. And the details of the discontinuance plan and the details of any other plans can be addressed. So let's not stop. Let's not stop moving forward because of the details. I ask you to approve Article 12. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. I thought there was somebody else there that has now gone, so I'm going to go over here, and then we'll come back over here.
Hi, thank you. Jill Dixon, 1 Kenley Lane. I just wanted, I understand what Paul said, that it may not necessarily be necessary for the planning board to approve this, but I just wanted to see if maybe we could hear briefly from the planning board, what their position is on this. Not trying to belabor the point at all, but wanted to maybe hear the other side.
Somebody from the planning board want to speak briefly to that?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm Mimi Latrell. I'm the chair of the planning board. The planning board did not take a position on the project. We were in, as Paul stated, we don't approve or disapprove this, but per Mass general laws, we're required to report on this. And our question was, we kept getting different plans and different square footage, so we didn't know what the conveyance was. It says in the MOU 16,000, but we got discontinuance plans that said 27,000. So that, our question was, we didn't think that there was enough specificity on what town meeting was being asked. And it wasn't clear what was being conveyed. It wasn't clear what was being discontinued.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Kelly Roney, 2 House Court. I was one of the people who was concerned about the legality of the select board's actions in this, especially with regard to the conveyance of real property, which requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. And I think the select board is addressing that concern tonight. I guess it's not tonight, is it? This afternoon, by coming to us and asking us for that two-thirds approval. I do think the practice of license agreements needs to be restricted. They're not, plainly, they're not illegal. They're required to be revocable. But anytime you're going to put a public way across something that's revocable, bad idea. Come to town meeting first. Anything that the select board has the power to do, but is going to require two-thirds approval of town meeting, should get that approval before it starts to do things. Now, of course, there are going to be some exceptions because the select board is going to want to present a plan, so there's going to be engineering, so it can't be a blanket requirement. But this license agreement was illegitimate in my belief, and I believe the select board is addressing that. And so even though I don't think this proposal is perfect, I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, same mic.
Karen Schimkus, Lindbrook Road. We're addressing the merits of a very complex, many-layered onion. At the end of the day, this has to make business sense, and it doesn't, because it's not clear what the costs are to the town. Most importantly, this is an unsafe move of an intersection. It wasn't requested by the town. It wasn't, it came at the suggestion of an engineer. It wasn't requested by St. Mark's, surprisingly. So what you're doing is you're putting a road that should be 50 feet next to a park, mixing that with kids, athletics, wheelchairs, library patrons. I, in my opinion, that is unsafe, and it's an unnecessary move of the intersection. As far as the cemetery concerns, there was a contractor who came in, did a 50-or-so-page report, never reported where he dug the trenches specifically, ex Mark's spot. So the state came back with a letter asking, where did you dig? He dug one trench off-site, and he dug the other trench along the line of a wall, the northern edge of the old burial ground. That's a one-acre site. There are modern technologies that are used by national companies, for instance, in the location of African-American cemeteries that have been paved and constructed over. Those technologies are used every day by national companies and used well. So I don't believe the issue of burials has been addressed adequately. Also, it was, this all was started because it was depicted in the town history book that was published by the town, Fences of Stone, depicted as a nuthuck burial ground, so that's how this all got started. Trees came down at your expense. You paid for that. Monies were expended on private land. You all paid for that with no accountability, no reconciliation, very little public discussion. And in fact, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight if it weren't for a number of public records requests. I worked long and hard on this as well, including the legal aspects of it. I tried to speak earlier to the fact that procurement law, Chapter 30 P B, as this manual published by the Inspector General's Office, that's a state fraud office, Chapter 30B does not authorize swaps of real property between a local government and a private party, period. So here we are debating about puddles and moving a road, whether it's safe or unsafe, but I would pose to you that there are serious questions and concerns about the legality of the entire transaction that need to be answered first. Also, the business sense of this needs to be answered first. We've spent roughly a half a million dollars on private land without any legal permission from this floor. You are the owners of that land. So also, unbeknownst probably to the people who haven't done enough due diligence, you people, this floor, you've been being billed by the engineer on this project since roughly August of 2020. That's a full, at least six months before it even went before these people, the select board. Yeah, wow. I would urge you, for all of these reasons, to pay attention to the important legalities of this, the dubiousness of the whole thing, the way it wasn't discussed publicly. If you got up in a meeting, which is hard for me to do, I can't go to all their meetings, you were given three minutes to discuss concerns about questionable legalities, possible overspending, maybe, you know, irregularities, important things that are not being discussed here right now? Pay attention. This has to make sense. I think, I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone these articles, 12 and 13, please.
So Ms. Schimkus, I... It's very clear in our history and practice, we do not, we do not speak at length and then end by cutting everybody else off, so I'm not going to allow that.
But I don't mean to speak out of order. I mean, in terms of procedure, if that can come after these commenters, that would be fine.
Well, we, we, we're going to see what they have to say. I think we've been going on for quite some time, and folks have spoken at length both ways here.
This matter's been reported to the state fraud office, the inspector general's office, for many of the reasons discussed. So in terms of whether or not the state has had a problem with this or not, I don't think anyone at all has the right to get up and say that they haven't had a problem with it, because the state was never told by the town that the easements and the project was rejected last spring meeting, okay? So the people who were being told, hey, is this project being done in the public domain, they were okay with the idea of maybe a license agreement, but somewhere down the road, this has to be public money, tax, your money, spent on publicly-owned property. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Something new or to add at the same mic, please?
Yes, thank you. Oleg Shaner, 14th Air Lane. I'm coming into this as an interested resident who unfortunately, to my shame, knew nothing about the subject, so from that perspective, I'm just going on by what I heard today. It sounds like there were some issues in the way this project was commissioned and conducted, which has been acknowledged, which I appreciate, and public comment has been taken into account. A lot of work has been done to kind of address public concerns, which is great. That's the way these things are supposed to work. I think maybe there's an unstated feeling, though, that, you know, we don't quite know what are the lessons specifically that have been learned from whatever mistakes had been made, and again, I don't personally know what they are. So if the board wanted to address that question more specifically and just say, this is what we think didn't get done properly, or this is how we would do it better next time, I think people would appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Cook, do you want to just take a minute on that? You know, what, what's different today about your board?
Thank you for your comment. I would characterize the mistake that was made is that the whole project was rushed. There was a, the select board advisory, we always encourage people to try to get grants, so this was no exception. There was a lot of money that was available because of COVID in the state, so we were telling all the departments, try to see where you can apply for a grant and get it, and so that's what Ms. Galligan did. So you may remember, when this got started, there was an email pulled that I'd written on advisory where I questioned the cost of the project. It was, at that point, expected to be a million dollars to move the road, do the park, do the whole thing. And my question was, do you realize that there's a million dollars being spent on this project? And it wasn't because I didn't think they should do the project. It wasn't because I didn't think they shouldn't get a grant. It's just because we've got limited road money, and I just wanted to make sure that we had looked at this and decided this was the best use of our road money. Later, that million dollars got reduced to about $750,000. So I'd say, if you really, lessons learned, the biggest lesson is, you know, don't chase a grant. Take the time to take a look at the project, and if you can't make the grant deadline, then so be it. If we had spent more time looking at this, we may have concluded this was not the best use of road money, but we might have concluded it was. I don't know for sure. So that is the answer to the question of what we probably could have done a better job of, just slowed down and really thought about the use of this money from beginning to end.
Thank you. Thank you. Same microphone. I see you over there at 2.
Mr. Moderator, Jesse Stein, 6 McNeil Drive. I had filed an amendment with the town clerk to, and I'm, well, may I speak to the amendment now?
No, I, you may not have been here earlier. I do have your amendment. It goes to the third part of this article. We're only about to, or eventually going to vote first on the first part, and then your amendment is appropriate for the third part. Over here, number 2.
Ah, yes, thank you. Michael Weiss on 189 Cordova Road. I have a question just to follow up to Ms. Cook. Do we have the actual costing of this project? How much money have we spent? How much money are we going to need? I know that's part of the upcoming article. It's $250,000, which I think is insufficient, but how much have we paid for this? How much are we going to spend? What's going to be the final cost, including the cost to maintain it?
So I can answer the first part. I can't answer the last part, as far as the maintenance costs, so that would have to be by someone else that knows that better than I do. As far as the total cost of this project from beginning to end, including the building of the park, the 250, it's going to be about $750,000. And the way I get that is as follows. The original project was bid out at a million dollars. It was too much. Select board said, go back to the drawing board. Ms. Galligan did, and she decided to combine three projects into one, including this one, the Main Street project, finishing that, Deerfoot Flag work, and this one. That contract was two and a half million dollars. So the 750 is part of the two and a half. Ms. Galligan was asked many, many times to separate that contract into its three components, had trouble doing it. She finally did, and the number she gave me was $750,000. So that's what I believe the total cost is. As of this moment, the cost to finish the road is $126,000, and that's what E.H. Perkins intends to do when they come back in June, if they can do it in June. So that's the numbers for the road. I don't know what it will cost to maintain the park once it is finished.
So in that 750,000 is included the $126,000 for the road?
Yes.
And the cost of discontinuing the road and ripping up the road, the, see if this moves, is also included in that figure?
Yes, but, but, hold on, before you get excited here. It's in the contract now, so St. Mark's will have a choice. They're paying for that. So they can either, they can either pay for that within the contract, because we believe they can probably get it done cheaper that well, or they can go on their own. We're not paying for it either way, but yes, that cost is part of what's remaining in the E.H. Perkins contract.
So to the best of your knowledge and ability, this is going to cost $750,000 punto final, no more than that. We're going to get a lovely new park for $750,000.
And a new road.
And a new road.
And fixed drainage issues.
Okay, those are already done. Okay. But thank you.
Okay. So the answer, yes. Short answer to your question, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, James Nichols Worley, 94 Main Street. I'll be quick. I just want to address a point about the archaeology. I'm not an archaeologist, but...
Oh, you know, hold on. We've heard you on this article already. I need to, I need to have everybody at least once.
Okay.
Sorry. Next in line.
You've heard from me before, but I will address the last comments that were made.
Well, no, hold on, hold on. If everybody, look, I'm ready to entertain a motion to move the question, frankly.
I believe the lawyer should be consulted regarding the legal issues that have been raised.
I'm sorry, sir. Name and address.
Paul Carter, 6 Hillside Avenue. I believe the legal questions that have been raised should be addressed by the town council most appropriately.
I'm giving him one minute.
So the legal questions that I'm going to focus on are the ones regarding procurement and the inspector general. We actually met with the inspector general at their invitation, and we went through our process for procurement compliance. It is certainly true that they do not recognize land swaps. That's why you have two different transactions before you. They are separate transactions, even though they are familiarly characterized as a swap. Each of them stands on their own. What's more is the conveyances will be treated differently under Chapter 30B, which is the procurement statute. So there's full compliance with that. After town meeting, if town meeting approves this, we have to engage in procurement with respect to both a proposed sale, as well as potentially the proposed acceptance or purchase of the property under different procedures, and that is forthcoming. We went through all of this with the inspector general. They had obviously received a complaint. We went through the process. They were satisfied that we were on the right path with that, so we are, the way this is structured right now is in full compliance, and the agreement with St. Mark's requires full compliance with Chapter 30B. with St. Mark's requires full compliance with Chapter 30B, which we will be doing, as is typical, after we obtain town meeting approval for both of the two transactions separately.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jesse. All right. Anybody who has not spoken to this article, going once, going twice.
Yes.
It's hard to see. You're blending in with everybody. Yes.
Yes, over here.
Go ahead.
I actually was standing up to see if we, Jennifer Primack, 7 Jericho Hill Road, if we could move the question, please.[633.16][633.16](APPLAUSE)
So, a motion to move the question ends our debate on the question. It does not, it's not a vote on the question itself. It's a vote to stop talking. No, I mean, it's really, that's the essence of it. And so, when that motion is made, it is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote for obvious reasons, because cutting off debate is a serious step.
Point of order?
What's the point of order?
I had suggested a motion at the end of comments to definitely postpone, make a motion to indefinitely postpone the article for further consideration and study.
You have this, you have, with a motion to move the question, you have the exact same substantive thing. Either this...
I don't think so.
Well, no. Either, indefinitely postponed is to kill it, and when we vote on it after we move the question, you can either pass it or kill it. No, I'm just here. I'm being serious.
But we've not addressed the issue of value, and what is being traded.
Then vote no on this.
Yeah, you can vote, and you can vote no on moving the question. You can vote no on the question itself.
It's a business deal, sir.
Ms. Shemkis, what about the value would you like addressed?
Well, obviously, you cannot...
No, go to the mic, please. Let's make sure we dot the i's.
By law, by law...
Yeah, the lawyer already spoke.
No, no, don't, please, listen. We're not going to interrupt each other. You guys have been doing great so far.
Sir, legal experts also have weighed in on this.
Ms. Shemkis, comments to me?
Yes. By law, the value of each parcel being traded has to, you know, has to be valued by a professional appraisal according to widely accepted appraisal standards. So, obviously, that value depends on the attributes of each site. The value of an in-use, public, working road that's, you know, highly trafficked, it's a bypass road, to the signal downtown, which we need, it is the safest option, because the zoning in downtown was just changed. So, as you have more traffic and more development...
Order, order!
At any rate, the point is...
Listen.
Each parcel has to be properly valued.
All right, so let me stop you there. I am going to let town council address the intention to manage that, which is already in progress, and then we will go to the...
Yeah, but you're asking these people to vote on something that's quote-unquote "in progress"? No, that's incorrect. We have to know the value of what is being traded, because this is a business deal.
Ms. Shemkis, that is an argument to vote no, okay? That's it.
No, this is an argument to understand the math behind, are we leaving something on the table? In other words, we're, we've got an improved lot...
Yes, and in your mind, we don't know that yet, and therefore, we should vote no.
Well, there's cost.
And that's the end of it. I'm going to ask you now to stand down.
We've spent $750,000 improving a parcel, but we only get $80,000 back from St. Mark's in pilot payments.
Okay, so folks hurt you.
That's the math, folks.
All right.
This is not, this deal needs to be renegotiated. Get an extension, get an extension on the state grant, and renegotiate the deal. The math doesn't make any sense. The town could be leaving money on the table for no good reason. Thank you.
My second.
All right, go ahead. Don't worry about it. Yeah. All right, motion to move the question, two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, that motion carries, so that cuts off debate. We now move to, we are talking about the motion on Article 12 that's on the floor. This is also a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Opposed, okay, let's do that one more time. All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Okay, I declare a two-thirds majority. What's the question?
Okay, all right, all right. Look, if you look at, I'm sorry, I thought it was,
Article 12, which is on page 32 of the warrant, has a numbered paragraph one, a numbered paragraph two, and then it has sort of a final sentence under both of those things. The motion on the floor is with regard to paragraph one. At the very beginning, I divided the question, and I concede it's been a little, a fair amount of time, so I apologize if we lost track of that.
It's posted in the...
I'm sorry?
It's posted in the...
It's the first paragraph that's on the screen.
Why can't we vote the whole thing? It doesn't make sense to do it in three parts.
We don't have to, we vote, if you're so inclined, we don't have to take, you know, a significant amount of time to debate the other parts, but only the first part has been moved by Ms. Cook.
Point of order?
So, it's procedural.
So, point of order, Mr. Moderator. So, you're, just to be clear here, we're only voting on number one of Article 12?
That's all that's been moved.
That's all that's been moved?
That's correct. Now, depending on the outcome, right, if this was, if Article one was voted down, Ms. Cook might choose not to bother with the rest. That's the reason for the division. If it passes, obviously, we'll go right to number two.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, who's talking?
Marty Hulahan, 26 Clifford.
Yes.
I do not recall a motion to the hall to actually move it into three parts that we voted on.
Yeah.
I think, there was there one?
No, there wasn't a motion to do it. I did that under my powers as a moderator in town meeting time. Remember, I said when three things...
I remember. I just thought you had to get a vote from the floor. So, I think that's why there's confusion right now.
Okay, thank you. Always happy to be reminded. Okay, so, Ms. Cook's motion was on number one on your screen. We're now at the point where we are ready to vote on that, number one. It's a two-thirds vote, obviously, depending on the... Pardon?
We voted to move the question. No, we voted... It passed. What is one?
The, look, you guys did, I asked you for a two-thirds vote. There was obviously some concern that some folks did not understand that we were voting on number one and not the whole thing. So, having clarified that, I certainly want to make sure that we now take that vote with that knowledge, with everybody having that knowledge. It makes, that's all, it makes sense to me.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. I think the problem is that in the warrant, Article 12 is not what you have up on the screen. We have a very different text.
No, and I've explained this, you're right, and I've explained this as well. I don't think it's very different, but the point is, warrant, the warrant is an article that tells you, hey, we're going to talk about the St. Mark's situation, and here's how it's going to unfold. It's an outline. It's a summary, if you will. The actual motion that Ms. Cook made is what we vote on. Process questions, I'm happy to take them.
I'd like to move that we vote on one and two together.
We don't, we don't have, we have to dispose of Ms. Cook's motion.
Okay.
Okay, and, you know, theoretically, you could defeat it and then have her make a combined motion, but I don't recommend it.
For those procurement reasons, that's why they're separated.
Yeah. Process questions, any others?
Please explain why.
Okay. All right, so, with that being said, Ms. Cook's motion requires a two-thirds vote to pass. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, all right, I declare a two-thirds majority. Ms. Cook, do you want to move forward with number two, please?
I do. So, I moved that the town acquire and accept a parcel of land from the trustees in St. Mark's School of Southborough, Inc., said transactions to facilitate the reorientation of St. Mark's Street, as well as the development of a park, as shown on plans on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the select board to enter into agreements for the acquisition of such land on such terms as the select board shall determine.
So, receive a second. All right.
Vote to move the question.
Any... All right, all right. I mean, that's, it's highly unusual, but in this case, I think I'm going to allow that. So, we're going to, we're going to vote to move the question on the second part. It requires two-thirds. All in favor, all opposed. Declare a two-thirds majority. Now, we are voting on number two itself. We just, we just cut off debate on number two. All in favor of number two, please raise your cards. All opposed. I declare a two-thirds majority, number two. Ms. Cook, the third part, and Mr. Stein, get ready, please.
I moved that the town vote to dis, excuse me, to discontinue the above-described portion of St. Mark's Street as a public way.
So, receive a second. All right. Mr. Stein, you submitted an amendment. Why don't you go to the mic and...
Jesse Stein, 6 McNeil Drive. I'm a member of the planning board, but speaking as an individual. In the course of the planning board review under Mass General Law, there were a number of concerns that came out with the discontinuance specifically, is what I'm speaking to now. This was rerouted in the early, mid-2000s, and it wasn't clear. We could not find through our research whether or not the original St. Mark's Street had been discontinued properly. The submission to us, and in the warrant article for that matter, has no meets nor bounds, so it is not clearly defined as far as what is being discontinued. The discontinuation plan was not stamped nor signed, and there is, there's a stone wall that exists on the northwest corner of St. Mark's Street that is not on the plan, and it's not clear how it affects the licensing, if it's going to be relocated. So, for that reason, I do feel like we are in a suboptimal position as a town, where it makes sense to move forward with the first two motions that actually have passed. But the discontinuance piece really needs to be done correctly. And, you know, if we look at how we got to this point, it was by, you know, shotgunning and, you know, not following best practices that got us into this state of mitigation that we are now in. You know, now we have a chance to actually do, you know, starting from this point forward, things correctly. So, you know, let's have this discontinuance done right, so that we can, you know, make the best of the situation.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask town council to speak to the legalities of what you're referring to.
Sorry, just to be clear, my amendment is to strike the language and further to see if the town will vote to discontinue the above-described portion of St. Mark's Street as a public way, or do or act anything in relation thereto.
Yeah.
Just want to clarify that.
And you're reading from the article, but essentially, your amendment is to defeat this motion.
Thank you.
Because that's, that's, that's all there is to it, is the one sentence. So, I'm going to have town council speak to your point.
And, thank you, Jesse. So, neither acceptance of a roadway nor discontinuance of a roadway require a meets-and-bounds description. Acceptance of a roadway does require a plan to be filed with the town clerk. It doesn't require the recording of a plan, but sometimes that happens. But it requires that a plan, at the very least, which could be accompanied by meets-and-bounds, be filed with the town clerk. Discontinuance does not even require a plan to be filed with the town clerk. Here, however, because only a portion of the roadway is being discontinued, we advised that it would be important to file with the town clerk a plan of the portion of the roadway that is being discontinued. The engineers who are working on the project and the surveyors who are working on the project did that, and that was filed. That is sufficient to comply with the law and to accomplish the discontinuance with respect to the portion of the roadway that is under the motion. Thanks.
Mr. Semino, could I clarify what we're trying to do with this one? I'm done here.
I got to have you go to a mic.
Okay.
Yes?
I moved to call the question here.
Motion's been made to move the question. It's been seconded. It cuts off debate. It's not a debatable motion. If it passes, then we vote on the motion itself. But the motion on the floor is to amend the language on the screen to strike it out. So, when we, let's see if we're going to end debate on that right now, and then I'll make sure we understand what we're voting on. Right now, we're voting on ending debate on this, on this motion.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Without me clarifying something, that there is not the correct information for this to be voted on. I appreciate what Mr. Stein did, but there is something that needs to be explained to the town hall, so they know how to vote on this article. That's not clear with what he said.
Is, did town council just cover it?
Was there a second?
Yeah, did town council just cover it, is my question?
Not the reason that this is on here. That's what we're trying, we need the road to be discontinued to actually do the work.
All right.
Else, we wait for the next town meeting, and therefore, we sit here with the park looking like this for another year.
All right, so, you've heard, you've heard, you've heard from Mr. Stein, you've heard from town council. We're going to vote on this motion to, to move the question. It, yeah, it's unfortunate, Ms. Cook, but that's what I have to do. So, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards.
Of moving the question?
Of moving the question, that's all we're talking about. In favor?
The amendment.
Okay, all opposed. Okay. I declare a two-thirds majority. So, now, the motion on the floor is essentially whether to defeat this motion, because the amendment strikes the whole thing, the whole language on the screen. So, just to understand that the motion to amend is a majority vote. If you vote for the motion to amend, you are killing this third part. So, keep that in mind. Think about that. I want to be clear, so people understand. And if I have any questions about that, please ask them.
Can you just restate what the motion is?
Yeah, the motion is to amend, well, he, now, we have it on the screen. The cross out, everything that you see down there crossed out in red, which basically eliminates this last part of the article.
Read it again, please.
Okay. It says, "And further to see if the town will vote to discontinue the above-described portion of St. Mark's Street as a public way."
Remove.
And that's been, that's been removed, so St. Mark's Street would not be discontinued if this motion passes. And the project would not go forward. So, any other procedural questions?
No.
Okay. So, on the motion to amend, as shown on the screen, if you are in favor of that amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed. Amendment fails. Okay. So, we're back to the, we're back to the main motion. And Kathy, you had something you want to say about it. Please stand up.
Here?
Yeah.
So, I just want to explain, the reason we need the third part of this is because we can't do the work that you just approved in one and two without this part being done. So, they're all integral to being able to start this project, have the contractor come back in June and get it done. Without the third part, we're stuck on the first and two, so we haven't accomplished a whole lot with the first and two. So, we need the third one to get the whole project done.
It's important to note that legally, we could do one and two. We could swap land, right? Small s swap, and then do nothing. But, you, I think it's probably pretty... But you, you, I think it's probably pretty easy to understand Ms. Cook's point. Okay. Comment or question about this motion? Yes.
I move to call the question here.
All right.
Mr. Moderator, I have a, I have a point of order. I just want...
What is your point of order?
We vote to discontinue this, which I'm in favor of, but tomorrow, the road is closed.
It's not a point of order.
Yeah, that's not, he's right. That's not a proper point of order. If people want to hear more about this, you should defeat the motion to, to call the question. I honestly don't know the answer to that question, but we gotta continue with the vote. So, the motion to move the question on this last piece, all those in favor of moving the question, all those opposed. All right? I declare a two-thirds majority. Mr. Clerk? All right. So, now, we are on this motion, the, the actual substance of it, to pass this last part of the screen, to discontinue the road. All those in favor? And all those opposed? All right. I declare a two-thirds majority on that. Article 12 is wrapped. Let's, let's move right to Article 13, Ms. Cook.
Well, you want to do it? You want to do it? You ready? Okay. Article 13. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $250,000 for funding of the Saint Mark's Street Park.
Receive a second. Go ahead, Ms. Cook.
So, not a lot more to add here, I don't think. We explained this pretty well, I think, within, for the presentation for the 12, number 12 and 13. So, we have set aside $250,000 from our free cash from 6/30/2022 to be able to provide the funds to actually build the park, including the engineering. This is an all-in number, not to exceed.
Any comment or question at the mic? Yes.
So, as an engineer, this is a, an appropriate cost estimate.
I'm sorry, sir. Name and address, please.
I'm Paul Carter at 6 Hillside Avenue.
Thank you.
As an engineer, a transportation engineer, this is an appropriate amount of money for these modest improvements to create a park, and given the current context of very high construction costs, it's perfectly appropriate.
All right. Other comments, questions? All right. Article 13. This requires only a majority vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. All opposed. Article 13 passes. Article 14.
I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate $246,418.51 from the CPA Fund, fiscal year 2023, budgeted reserve for the Southborough portion of the rehabilitation of the Algonquin High School tennis courts. To be included are seven tennis courts, three pickleball courts, and one basketball court for recreation purposes, as requested by the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District. This consists of $220,000, $220,016.53 in project costs, and an additional $26,401.98 in contingency funding. Contingency funds are only available after approval of the CPC for unexpected costs, unforeseen at the time of the application. Funding is contingent on Northborough funding their portion of the project, and projects start no later than June of 2025, or funds to be returned to the Southborough Community Preservation Fund balance as directed by the Southborough Community Preservation Committee. Project to be completed in conformance with details as presented to the members of the Community Preservation Committee, and to be documented in the application in signed memorandum of understanding. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer, or do or act anything in relation thereto. There appears to have been a slight clerical error in the, the final warrant. I made a, I fixed that error in the very last sentence, and I have a copy of what I said to provide to town clerk.
Well, did you, did you recite the correct information in the motion you just made?
I did.
Then we're okay. What's your name in town? Or name and address?
Sorry. Ben Smith, 14 Ledchill Road, Vice Chair, Community Preservation Committee.
Does Mr. Smith's motion receive a second? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I didn't realize I was making the presentation.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
Okay.
Normally, this is the time when somebody who, who makes a motion wants to maybe just explain briefly what, what you're asking for.
This is a, a request for the $246,000 to help defray the cost of the improvements that are gonna be discussed in a future article at Algonquin High School. Not all of that project is eligible for community preservation funds, but we've identified elements that are, and this is the cost associated with those, according to the engineering documents.
So, can I, let me, let me summarize if I understand, then. This is an allocation, a potential allocation of CPA funds to cover the cost of improving Algonquin athletics that's coming up in the next article, and I presume, so far, is that right?
That's correct.
And, and if the next article fails, then this money's not, it's just gonna sit where it is?
That's correct. And just by, by means of explanation here, the reason we're doing it this way is, is the CPA trust fund can't be used for reimbursement of something that's already been appropriated. So, if the, if the main appropriation came first, we couldn't actually do this under the Community Preservation Act. We have to put this first, then go for the main appropriation for the lion's share of the project cost. It's sort of an arcane corner of the Community Preservation Act.
Comment or question, Article 14? Yes.
Yeah, Tom Gittens, 73 Flag Road. I'm just wondering, is this money that's already laying in a bank account somewhere, or money we're gonna go borrow?
I want to make sure I get this right. This is money that we have on hand in the Southborough Community Preservation Fund.
Thank you.
Brian, can you confirm? Brian Ballantyne down front gave me a thumbs up. Next, yes.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. Does the regional high school have a pickleball team?
These, these are questions beyond me. I had, I had expected, frankly, that members of the project team, the project proponent, would be joining me on stage here.
Greg Martino, Superintendent of Schools. We do not yet have a pickleball team, but I will share that it is part of our physical education class, pickleball, so it is part of the experience that all students have as they travel through the high school experience.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comment or question, Article 14? Yes.
So, when we approved the ad-wren for Algonquin and we built these fields, that was 30 years ago. Did we know about pickleball?
I certainly did not. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise... What's the point of order?
They're showing something that's incorrect. It says, "I move the article as printed in the warrant. You can dispute that, but you can make sure that's not what they're showing on the document."
Keep reading.
Keep reading.
All right. That's a fair point. The exact, yes, the, the motion that was made is not identical to what was printed in the warrant. The motion is what counts, so it's a fair comment.
I can tell you, the exact change that I made is in the very last sentence, and I will read through, starting with said funds. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the, and here I inserted, Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer, Collector, or do or act anything in relation thereto. So, I inserted the phrase, "Community Preservation Committee and the."
So, what's printed in the warrant indicates that the Town Treasurer, Collector controls the expense. The motion added the Community Preservation Committee as part of that oversight. Is that fair to say?
That's correct, and I will, I will add that for nearly 20 years, every CPC article that's come before a town meeting has had that language. I think this is just a clerical error. This and, and two further CPC articles, I'm gonna be making the same amendment to, the same change.
All right. All right. Are we feeling all right? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Article 15.
Paul Desmond, 5 Pine Cone Lane, Member of the Regional School Committee.
Paul Desmond, 5 Pine Cone Lane, Member of the Regional School Committee.
Now, go right, let's, let's get the mic right up there. There you go.
Paul Desmond, 5 Pine Cone Lane, Member of the Regional School Committee. Is this gonna be up here, Paul, or should I read it? I'll read it. "I move to see if the town will vote to approve the $7,960,393 indebtedness authorized by the Regional School Committee of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District to pay costs of renovated and making extraordinary repairs and other improvements to the district's athletic facilities, including but not limited to replacing existing tennis courts, replacing the existing bleachers and press box to ensure compliance with ADA requirements, construction of a new outdoor amphitheater, renovations to the amenities building, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, or to do or act anything in relation thereto."
Receive a second. Hold on.
You good?
You skipped a line, just say, "I move the article as printed in the warrant," and that comes as a basis, okay?
I've been told I skipped a line, so I'd like to say, "I'll move the article as printed in the warrant."
Receives a second. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Desmond.
I'd like to turn it, if I could, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Martino, who has a short presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond, and good afternoon. I'm Greg Martino, and I have the privilege of serving as the community of Southborough's Superintendent of Schools. Full disclosure, I did wake up this morning concerned, concerned about the weather, and whether I'd be called upon to ask for my advice of whether canceling town meeting because of the weather. I'm pretty confident that the wave of joy that spreads across 4,400 students would not be the same wave of joy that would be canceling town meeting. So, on behalf of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, I am pleased to provide you with information regarding Article 15, the Algonquin Sports Complex Improvement. The Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee unanimously voted to appropriate $7,960,393 at its March 15, 2023 school meeting for the improvements. The purpose of this article is to see if the town will vote to approve the indebtedness authorized by the Regional School District Committee of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District to pay for the costs of renovating, making extraordinary repairs, and other improvements to the district's athletic facilities. Next slide, please. I want to thank the Algonquin Regional High School Athletic Complex Building Project Committee for its hard work and dedication over the past year in bringing the proposal to fruition. We have schematic design, we've gone through the permitting process, and we've gone through the procurement process, and we actually have a bid in hand, and we have an intent to award the bid contingent upon approval at Northborough and Southborough town meetings. Why is this project necessary? The current facility has served the communities well over the years. However, it is beyond its useful life, and there are safety issues as a result. The stadium was, field was top dressed and overseeded in 2004, and the soil is heavily compacted. The track was reconstructed in 1994, and the surface was recoded in 2009. The track's base layer has failed, and the top surface can no longer be repaired. As a result, the track is unsafe and unusable for track meets. The tennis courts were installed in 2004, and there is significant cracking and failure of the base layer. The current multipurpose field was added in 2004, and similar to the stadium field, the soil is heavily compacted. The challenge with the two main fields is that the use demands do not allow for the fields to be properly rested and are significantly overused. The current complex is not ADA compliant, which includes the current stadium, press box, and amenities building, which includes the restrooms. The lighting was installed in the mid-1990s and does not meet the current lighting standards. In summary, the facility is beyond its useful life and poses safety concerns for Algonquin The scope of the work includes creating a fully compliant ADA athletic complex that includes a reconstructed track, replacing the stadium field and multipurpose field with artificial turf, replacing the grandstand with ADA-compliant seating and a press box, replacing the stadium lights with LED lighting, adding LED lights to the multipurpose field, reconstructing the tennis courts, adding three pickleball courts and a basketball court, upgrading the amenities building to be ADA-compliant, and adding an amphitheater and a lacrosse As discussed in the prior article, this is a rendering of the tennis ball, tennis courts and the three pickleball courts and a basketball court. And this is a rendering of the amphitheater. The proposed project is a significant investment in our educational community, and many will benefit from the improvements. The next generation of students will have access to modern, safe, and ADA-compliant athletic facilities. The residents of Northborough and Southborough will have access to updated tennis courts, pickleball courts, and a basketball court, and an updated track for running and walking. The amphitheater will provide a space for outdoor lessons and performances, and the addition of turf fields will provide increased access to community youth sports and organizations. The project cost is $7,960,393. In accordance with the regional agreement, Northborough's apportionment of the project cost is $4,961,713, and Southborough's apportionment is $2,998,680. If approved at both Northborough and Southborough town meetings, a 15-year bond will be held by the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District. In FY '24, there will be no tax impact due to the athletic complex project. The Northborough-Southborough Regional District in '25 and '26 anticipates issuing bond anticipation notes, and in '25 and '26, the athletic complex will be costly, project interest only. In 2027, the athletic complex project principal and interest will come online, and it is the one year that the project will overlap with the 2004 debt assessment, which will come offline in 2027. Moving forward in fiscal year '28 through '238, the athletic complex... Moving forward in fiscal year '28 through 2038, the athletic complex project will be the only debt assessment which will include principal and interest. The intention of the regional school committee was to forego this project and wait for this project until the bond for the 2004 renovation was paid off. However, due to the timing and needs of the athletic complex, the need for this improvement is now, and we tried to restructure, structure the bond anticipation note to not have the two debts overlap. So what are the impacts of disapproval of the issuance of debt? We believe that there will be increased future costs of the total project, will have unsafe conditions requiring relocation of certain event, events, for example, track events, field hockey and lacrosse, will have non-compliance with ADA, will continue to have limited access to facility from community groups, recreation and youth sports, will need to make continued financial investments to repair for short-term gain, will have continued poor lighting conditions, and most importantly, will have disconnect between the district's core values, mission, and vision. In 2013, the Algonquin Boosters Athletic Club worked with Gale Associates on a design. The cost estimate in 2013 compared to the cost estimate in 2023 went up by 65% to $6, 99, $6,199, for the same scope of work. Waiting a year will most certainly add to the overall cost. In closing, the purpose of this article is to see if the town will vote to approve the $7,960,393 indebtedness authorized by the regional district school committee of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District to pay costs of renovating and making extraordinary repairs and other improvements to the district's athletic facilities. I appreciate the citizens' consideration of the project, and I yield back to the moderator.
Thank you. Comments or questions about Article 15? Looks like we're going to start over here.
Thank you. Lee Belniak, five Boswell Lane. On behalf of my freshman athlete, your student athletes, your future student athletes, grandchild athletes, who are feeling this real time with a crumbled track and wet fields and having to move home meets to other schools, I am respectfully requesting that we move to vote.
No, 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 no. I, I think I heard move the vote.
I did.
Yeah, no, we, we, again, we don't, we don't have a, something to say and then cut everybody else off. So let's go to microphone number two.
Claire Reynolds, 104 Main Street. I totally agree with all the improvements that need to be made and what you listed in terms of renovating and extraordinary repairs. The question that I have is, and I understand how it works, you can't really, because it's a regional, you can't really mend it, so to speak, at this end. I guess the, the, the issue that I have is the amphitheater for $1 million, if my figure is correct from the presentation, is new. So while it's being split, and it's being bonded, and it's being stretched out, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there's an extra $1 million that is going to, at some point in time, hit your taxes here for the people in Southborough for an amphitheater that is actually up in Northborough. And I assume that includes all of the, that's a complete amphitheater, whatever. I haven't bought one recently, so I don't know what comes with it, so to speak, but for a million bucks, it ought to be, there should be a lot included with it. So maybe if you could just explain to people how, if they did not support this, and I know I'm already going to lose this one, but that's okay, if they did not support it, that, how you folks could go back and maybe negotiate, do we really need to have this new amphitheater in this package? Thank you.
So, thank you for the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The cost of the amphitheater is $133,000, not $1 million. So again, so, so just factual information, $133,000 is the amphitheater, and the project committee spent a lot of time discussing, how can we make this a space not just for athletics, but also the community, fine and performing arts, and the amphitheater was as a result of those discussions.
Thank you. Right here.
Hi, Grant Barrington, 58 Flag Road. I see in the warrant that advisory voted against by a four-to-one vote, and so I was hoping to hear from someone on advisory about why they voted the way they did.
Andrew, can you, yeah.
Sure. So advisory is in support of the project in total. We voted to support the CPA article. Advisory would, would really like to, and we've been pushing to increase the CPA surcharge in town to 3%, which would then give us probably, you know, an estimated, if it was this year, 48% match on our dollars. So it would go a long way towards this project and to other projects. So we were hoping that that would be done in time for this project. Doesn't look like that. It was on the warrant, but that was pulled at the end. I think it's there, is the possibility of being on the fall town meeting, so while we support the project, we would like to have the state pay 48% of it if we can.
That makes sense to me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, same mic.
Oh, all right. Hi, Andrea Hamilton, 119 Northborough Road. So I think my question kind of continues along the advisory position, where, you know, I understand the urgency that this is being brought forward with, but it feels like maybe we're just a little ahead of ourselves. It sounds like there's state money that we are potentially losing out on by bringing it now. I will say again, I respect that the fields don't work today, but that at the same time, you know, I've been doing a lot of research into the different warrant articles coming up for this town meeting, and I will say that, that this one in particular is the single largest number we're asking for. It's also the one that has sort of felt, to me at least, the least last, most last minute, and that I've had the hardest time finding kind of detailed information about, which always gives me pause, especially given some of our recent excitement in town over things that have moved really fast, and then we've, we've been disappointed with at the end. So, so to that end, I guess I have, I have two questions, trying to understand, you know, from the Southborough perspective. So the first is, when I look at the committee, it's almost entirely made up of Northborough parents. So if I look at the breakdown, we have nine parents on the committee, two from Southborough, seven from Northborough, so it, it does seem like it's pretty, and that's, that's pretty off from what our student population is. So I'm trying to understand why that, why it looks like that, you know, why it's so heavily weighted in that direction. And then I'm also, I'm looking at the numbers on the last slide, right? And again, I think we can see from the confusion over the amphitheater, there was a $6 million number presented, we're talking about $8 million. And again, those numbers look like they came from 2013, and we're applying a pretty broad percentage multiplier across them. And so when I think about the slide you had that included, you know, the benefit to the high school, actually what most of that slide was, was the benefits to the towns. And my understanding in general, having lived in Southborough for a little while now, is that Southborough really doesn't utilize Algonquin outside of the high school. It's, it's pretty minimally used beyond that. And so I was really hoping to be able to see a more concrete breakdown of each of the pieces of the project, the costs associated with those projects, pieces of the project, and the anticipated usage, both in terms of the high school and the different towns, just so we can understand, you know, again, as Southborough, are we getting the appropriate deal here? And again, hearing advisory and how maybe we're not getting all the money we could be just because we've timed it this way, it just feels like maybe we're a little ahead of ourselves, and we're kind of pushing through on something that isn't necessarily in our exact interest today, even if this is something that eventually has to be done. So again, the two questions were, why does the, why does the committee makeup look up the way it does, and do you have that detailed breakdown of cost and anticipated usage?
All right. You want to?
Sure. So, so we did put an all call for people who are interested in serving on the Algonquin Athletic Building Committee. So the members who you see who are listed were folks who volunteered to serve on that committee. I would not characterize the work that the committee did as rushed or hastily done. This has been a project that has been discussed since 2013. The committee has spent over 18 months working with Gale Associates, schematic design, having conversations around what the goals are of this project, and how do we achieve those goals? In terms of the community use, I can't speak to the community use. I do know that if you do visit Algonquin on a weekend, the tennis courts are being used, the fields are being used, the tracks are being used by many community, community members. It is a resource to both communities, Northborough and Southborough, and most importantly, what I care about most is making sure our Algonquin Regional High School students have access to modern, safe athletic facilities. Over two-thirds of our student body participate in athletics. Our physical education program relies on those fields and those components of the facility for physical education class, and I think the, the greatest benefit is to our students in the programming that they'll have access to.
So do, do you have that breakdown of the cost for the individual items and kind of usage, and what, what, where the asks are coming from?
So the $6 million that you were mentioning was a comparison of the schematic design and work that was done in 2013, forwarding that 2013 design costs and costs to what it would cost now for an apple-to-apple comparison. That was just a comparison to, if we had done the project in 2013, it would have cost us $3 million. If we did the identical work that Boosters Athletic Incorporated set out to do in 2013 and 2023 would cost us $6 million. It was just an example to emphasize that over time, this has not gotten less expensive, but more expensive.
I, I don't want to belabor the point, but that where does the $8 million come from? And then I'll be done. If you don't have an answer, there's no answer.
So general conditions and site preparation is $8 million, eight thousand, I, sorry, $828,923. The track, stadium field, stadium lights, and amenities building renovation totals The tennis courts with the basketball and pickleball courts is $584,063. The multipurpose field with lights and amphitheater is $1,802,450. There's a contingency of 12%, which is $832,069, and there's design and construction period services, which totals $194,418, for a total of $7,960,393.
And that's, I'm sorry, I'm not taking more than my share of time. Are you able to put that up on the screen so we can just see what we're paying for? Yeah, I, I, I just want to see it. I just want to see it. I just want to see it.
It's fine. No, belabor away.
No, no, because there are parts that I, I. Does it have the breakdown? I couldn't find it.
Jay, do you have that?
Okay.
Okay. I think it's, it's, it's a fair, it's a fair.
I mean, it's $8 million you're asking from our taxes.
Yeah, so, so.
All right, it's, it's $3 million you're asking, but you're asking for us to bond eight. Yes.
So I don't have the slide available to project, but there is a one-page handout. I'm not sure if, if someone has that, that can, that does have that.
That has those numbers on it?
It does.
Okay, I will try to find it. Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah.
Thank you. Next, the same mic.
Jack Battles, 11 Lattice Square Road. I am a student at Algonquin Regional High School, a senior, and I am.
Hold on, hold on. Are you a registered voter?
I am a registered voter.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I am the captain of the lacrosse team and cross-country team, and right now, my teammates of the lacrosse, lacrosse team are currently practicing at 911 Memorial Field in Southborough, Massachusetts, the only turf field we have available out of the two towns. I feel that this is an urgent matter in that we, thank you for the picture in front, that's very flattering. I feel that this is very urgent. The field hockey team needs turf to practice, and they have to travel to Four Kicks or 911 Field to be able to practice at all. We are one of the only schools in central Massachusetts that does not have a turf field available for any sports teams to play. Our track can't even be used for track meets or practices, so we have no home field advantage, or we can't even have a home meet. We must travel all around Massachusetts in order to be able to, to be able to compete in our sporting events, and I don't think that's fair, so I'd just like to express the urgency in this article. As someone who won't even be able to reap the benefits of this, I just want my teammates and everyone at Algonquin in the future to be able to have access to these amenities. And I guess I come here to speak as a teammate to those who will hopefully be able to use that. I also believe it's important, our youth programs use Algonquin as fields. Right now, I can't even practice at Algonquin because of drainage issues. For the first three weeks of my season, I have to practice at 911 Field, which is fine because it's close to me, but for people that live in Northborough, it is a pretty far drive. I just don't think this is fair, for us at least, and if we keep pushing this along, it will just be the problem in two years that my class or the next class will have to deal with. So I feel like this is urgent, not only for Northborough residents who maybe use this more, but for students at the school and for the youth programs in both towns, that this be passed. Thank you.
Okay. Next, at the same mic, please. Go ahead, same mic.
You sure he, okay. Robert Reader, for Blendon Woods Drive. I have one question and one comment. I know when we recently redid the 911 Field, there was a big issue of how long the artificial turf fields last, and my concern is with a 15-year bond, do we expect this, this field, is it, is it designed to last the 15 years?
Yes, the 12 to 15 years is the turf replacement, and we do have our, for Gale Associates, Kathy Herval in the audience, she's far more knowledgeable about the replacement cycle. One of our goals to also is to provide more opportunities for facility rental and create a revenue stream so we can actually create a fund to fund the long-term maintenance of this project, to not have to come back to town meeting members and ask for additional money to just replace the turf.
That's great. That's a great idea. Just now, follow up, my final, my comment is to a couple of things. One, about the ratio of Northborough and Southborough. I've been here even since we debated whether or not to stay a regional school. We traditionally have been about two-thirds Northborough, one-third Southborough. So the ratio of that committee seems spot on. And also, when you talk about us using the fields, I spent all fall, on the weekends, going to football games with Southborough people on the Algonquin multipurpose field because Southborough has a real deficit of fields for its own use, especially since we've lost a couple. And the final thing is, and I know this is going to sound weird, but I got to tell you, many, many of us moved to this town because of the quality of education, and our children, my children, live here with their children because of the education. And to me, if the athletic is in such poor shape, I'm concerned about what that's going to do for that quality, for my home value, for the students going there, and I think our share of $3 million for this entire athletic complex is not a bad deal, and I'm not going to try to micromanage it. I think the committee has probably done a lot of, put a lot of effort into it, so I support it.
All right. Something new, different? Go ahead.
Alex Dean's Row, 17 Harris Drive. I understand the concern of rising construction costs in the future, and I just want to confirm if the current high interest rates and their potential to decrease, decrease in the future have been factored into this plan?
So we've been working closely with bond counsel. The analysis that we've done factors in a 3.75% interest rate. I will also note that the bond anticipation notes that we, that the regional school district. I will also note that the bond anticipation notes that we, that the regional school district will issue, if this is passed, will allow us also to weather some of the volatility in the market that we're seeing over the next two years.
All right. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Question or comment? Article 15. Believe me, you all blend in. Go ahead, sir.
Timfling, 18 Main Street. I understand the need for turf, while it's desirable. A lot of major professional sports teams are switching their certain turf or back the grass. Has the thought of turf and the non-contact injury and the extra increased percentage of risk associated with students using it, has that been factored in? Is there a certain turf that's going to be used, and is there a concern about extra injury risk using this kind of field?
Yeah, and I'll ask Kathy Herval if it's okay. Will the moderator come up and answer those questions?
Why don't you introduce her as she makes her way up?
Yep, so Kathy Herval from Gale Associates, she's been the lead project designer and engineer on this project.
She is on our list.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for your question. In regards to the safety of synthetic turf, it, the, the studies, we have studies that show that there's no difference regarding grass, and there's definitely better safety records with turf versus the fields that your kids are currently playing on with the bumps, the wet, the compacted soil. So I just, you know, that's where we're, we're at with the synthetic turf. And unfortunately, the professional sports have an, you know, a, a lot of, lot more funding than the schools do, and they can afford to have a grass field that is used, limited use. A regular grass field can only take about 250, kind of average, one and a half hour to two-hour games. And, and that gets even reduced if you use, like, football. One rainy football game can destroy a field for a season, and they, these are the reasons that we go towards the turf. And like I said, unfortunately, the schools do not have the luxury or the budgets that a lot of the private facilities go with. I'll be, you know, nothing better than a beautiful grass field, but to maintain those fields, it costs at least $30,000 to $35,000 a year to keep them. And unfortunately, with the amount of use that these fields are going to see between your multiple sports, you know, you've got girls, boys, football, lacrosse, you know, times two with every, you know, every sport, and they just, they just, the grass fields just can't hold up and they don't have the space to be rested like they need to be to, to keep that quality and that safety. So, thank you.
Okay. If I can respond to that, I understand that there's a need for turf. I fully get the use case, but the New York Giants right now are switching out their turf field for a new turf field because of their non-contact injuries that are happening on it. Odell Beckham Jr.'s knee is one of those examples with the ACL tear. So there are certain types of turf that are safer than others. So I get the need for turf. I had a, at my high school that I went to, we had turf. I, I understand what it's like to go across the bumps in marching band, but there are certain safer turfs, so I'm just wondering if that has been explored? And if we're going to use the data that the National Football League and others have to make sure non-contact injuries are minimized and the right turf is installed?
So I can, I can speak to that briefly. So first, part of the project is installing a shock pad underneath the turf, which it does create a safer environment for concussions. Secondly, the turf that we will be installing, if this project is approved, is the same turf that the Tennessee Titans will be installing on their football field. We're also not using chrome rubber, we're using an Envirofill, so it gives a much more grass-like feel and increases the safety. So we have taken that into consideration. The turf that we'll be installing is the most modern turf that exists, so we have taken that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Right over here. Mic one.
Mr. Moderator, Jason Melanowski, 7 Lorenzo Drive, Chair of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. I came up here wanting to say a lot more than I'm just going to say. I just wanted to provide assurances that you have a standing bylaw committee in town that is charged with vetting capital projects from start to finish, including the implementation. We spent a lot of time looking at this, and I would ask the voters to not confuse a capital project that's in front of you with a theory of adopting a CPA surcharge in front of you. We have a bid that's in hand. We have certainty around a project timeline. We have certainty around a cost, and we have certainty around what the impact is going to be to our tax bills. Any vote that's no against that just introduces a lot of questions. When do we approve a CPA surcharge? Are you aware that that adds 2% to your tax rate? Is that something that would be actually effectuated at ballot? It adds a lot more uncertainty, so I just ask you to consider that, and also know that if this does move forward, the capital will continue as we are charged by the town's bylaw to make sure that this project is implemented appropriately. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Back over here.
Bonnie Fan of Middle Road. As part of the Board of Selectmen and the closeout of the new renovation of Algonquin, with Superintendent Milligan at the time, has any thought been given to the footprint of the high school today and the permanent infrastructure that we're talking to adding to it? The potential expansion of the school in the next 15, 20 years?
Yeah, I mean, I will share that there are no large capital projects that are on the horizon. If you look at enrollment trends over the next 10 years, we are, over the past 10 years, we've seen a decrease in enrollment at Algonquin Regional High School. We are going to be increasing enrollment about 10% by 2032, but we still can fit within the footprint without an issue, without having to expand the current footprint of Algonquin Regional High School.
Okay, thank you very much. And I am part of the Southborough Public Accessibility Committee, ADA, short. If there are approvals that need to be done for ADA reasons, I urge you to vote in favor of this.
Over here. Microphone one.
Lee Belniak, 5 Boswell Lane, I move to vote.
Now, is there anybody at a mic that, now, you tried that once before, right? Is there anybody at a mic that has not spoken yet that has something to add, different or new? Yes, go.
I just have a question. Sue Bows, 28 Lattice Square Road. We're being asked to approve the $7 million or close to $8 million, that the school district is going into indebtedness, but our portion of that is $3 million, right? Or 2.9 or something like that? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? New question? Yes, go ahead.
My name is Ben, well, that's loud. My name is Ben Shanzer. I live at 12 Fiddle Neck Lane in Southborough. I'm a senior at Algonquin, the student council president, and been elected by the whole student body to be their representative before the regional school committee, and I just want.
Hold on, hold on. You forgot, what's the most important thing? Are you a registered voter?
Yes, sir.
All right. Go.
I think Jack, who I have captain the cross-country team with this year, spoke to most of the things that I wanted to say, but I just wanted to briefly speak and support. The changes are extremely necessary. Our track team is literally running on the roads right now for their practice. Anytime there's been any precipitation in the last 24 hours, because they can't run on the track, the field is totally bumpy. If you kick a soccer ball straight, it'll go 50 yards in the other direction. The tennis courts are shattered. It looks like you dropped a 50-ball, 50-pound ball everywhere on them, and this improvement is just really needed, and it doesn't make sense to delay it when the cost will just go up over time. And I ditto everything else Jack said.
All right. Look, I think we're, we're close to a vote here. Is there anything new, either pro or con is okay, but if, if it's not something we've heard before, I'm interested in that.
Hi, I'm Saf Darmedina, 19 Southwood Drive. I serve on the Board of Health and the school district position. And I have to tell you, when we look at data on injuries, it's very mixed, and I can assure you that a properly maintained and monitored turf field, as Mr. Martinow has presented, poses less risk of injury than a grass field that's very hard to maintain because of the weather. The data is pretty clear that, you know, concussions especially, there's no direct proof that you will have an increased risk. I did write a letter earlier that some of you may have read, that yes, there was a study with mannequins that may have suggested that, but even they acknowledged that more data is needed, and really not a single sports medicine doctor actually has advised against using turf fields. They are all for it, for all the reasons mentioned. Thank you.
All right. Last call.
All right. Mina O'Hearn, 13 Fox Hill Drive. As the mom of three kids that, one at Algonquin, two more that will go, I want to take one second to pause and thank this community for supporting our schools over the years, and then I move to vote.
You're not going to break me down. We don't do it that way. Now, we're at the end of the lines at the mics, so we're essentially there anyway. But if, if, if there's nobody else, then I think we are ready to vote. Hold on. Okay, I just had to confirm, this is actually just a majority vote to, to approve or disapprove the school committee's decision to, to go into debt in these amounts, or in this amount. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay. We are just a couple of minutes before the break, but before we, I, I, I'm interested, if, if you're interested in grabbing the next article so we don't have to do it afterward, if it's going to be quick. And this is the CPA article that was held on 84 Main Street. Does anybody remember or know who did that and why? What's, what's, is it, is it something quick?
It's, it's very quick. The exact same issue, the last sentence in the article just needs to have that one five-letter, five-word phrase inserted, and we're good to go.
Yeah, so that's an amendment we're going to have to, we'll take it up at, what? Okay. Yeah, we'll take it up at 7:00. So look, I need a mo. Oh, the motion, fair enough. The motion carries. Folks, we are, we are, upon a motion and a second and a vote, we'll temporarily adjourn until 7:00 PM. Second? All in favor? All right. See you all at 7:00. We're in very good shape to finish tonight.